Good morning. I am calling this committee of the whole meeting of the Sunshine Coast Regional District to order at our announced time of, well, it's nine thirty-one now. So, one minute after our announced time. And we're meeting, we're meeting this morning on the traditional territories of the Shishal Nation. And our first item is to adopt the agenda. One, one piece of adopting the agenda is I'm, I'm suggesting that we, I've spoken to our corporate officer and we, we can move the in-camera business up to board. There is an extensive discussion right before in-camera that could just run out the time. So, I don't think we're going to get to that and we can do that at board. So, I'm proposing that we adopt the agenda with, the agenda with that amendment, moved by council, or moved by director, I've got it adjusted to S C R D from council here. Moved by Director Toth, seconded by Director McMahon. All those in favor? The motion carries. And then our next item on the agenda is a presentation, which is a delegation from, officially from the Gibsons Transportation and Accessibility Committee, but I think that committee is morphed in name. And also, I think Kale is here, is our, is not on that committee, but you're, you're our Colton, Colton Rockford and Kale Reed are both student representatives to the town of Gibsons. Kale's our alternate, Colton's the, our representative. And I think Kale, you're also on the district leadership team for the school district. And Anna Latanzi is a member of our accessibility committee at the town of Gibsons. And they are going to make a presentation to us regarding increasing public transit subsidy for students. Welcome.
Thank you. Mike on. I had to share my screen. Yes. Is that doing it? There we go. Okay. Yes, good morning. Yeah, we have me, Colton Rockford, the youth representative, Kale Reed, the alternate youth representative for the town of Gibsons and district student leadership team, and Anna Latanzi, a retired bus driver who has eight years with, or who worked with Greyhound, and eight years in B C Transit on the Sunshine Coast. And we're presenting to you on a proposal to make free public transportation for students. So, first of all, we're, we'll start with some background. There was a previous delegation on this topic in December twenty nineteen from two students from Elphinstone Secondary. They were also proposing that then all youth aged eighteen and under would receive free public transportation. And there were some actions planned where the board had approved motions to further investigate the financial implications and then ultimately move forwards on making that a reality. But these proposals withered away with COVID constricting the budget understandably. But since then, there have been some changes in circumstance such as ridership has decreased with COVID and we're still below pre-pandemic levels. And also, there are some planned expansions to the Sunshine Coast Transit Route ninety, which will then increase the frequency. So, with those combined, we have an excess of space on the buses to accommodate potential new passengers. And also, change from the previous delegation, we are also requesting that post-secondary students be included, both local or just local residents on the Sunshine Coast who either attend, for example, Cap U Cal X A campus, or who live here and transit into the mainland to get their education. And additionally, on our background, we are in a climate emergency such as in twenty twenty-one where we had a heat dome and atmospheric rivers, which, for example, caused some washouts of roads. And last year, twenty twenty-two, we had a drought, which then turned to a cold snap, which extended our drought effectively. And we had stage four water restrictions for a great period of that year. And also, thirty-two percent of our emissions on the Sunshine Coast come from our on-road transportation. So, naturally, then we want to examine how we can change our on-road transportation to play our part in decreasing our emissions. Additionally, the school bus needs more help. For some students, taking public transit can actually be much faster than taking the school bus because of the routes that the school bus takes, which will have to service every single home. But if students live along the main public transit route, it will be much quicker to take the public transit. So, we want to see how we can help those students use public transit. And lastly, we are currently in a situation where many students are uncomfortable using the bus as opposed to on the mainland where it's more so the mode to use public transit. Sort of here where not that many people use public transits, they feel that it's awkward, that they don't want to use the bus, they don't want, they feel like it's uncool. So, we want to see how we can make it normal to use the bus and further increase our bus ridership. So, here, we'll get into our main reasons.
Yeah, so, why to make public transit free for students? So, first off, we're going to start with equity. So, the bus fares disproportionately affect low-income families because they're having to pay that fare to the bus. And as a result of that, their children will have lower access to mobility, whether that be because their parents can't drive them around, or they can't afford a car. And so, by making the buses free, it can improve, it can make, provide equal opportunity to all students on the Sunshine Coast throughout access to jobs, to community resources, because we have a lot of wonderful community resources on the coast, especially for youths. But you need to be able to access those. It also, for a lot, for some students, it would make getting to and from school a lot faster because of how the transit works. For the school bus, it has to take a very circuitous route to reach everyone, where the public transit can get a lot of people there faster. And also, it provides access to like some of the most key parts of like youth is recreation and social life.
Next up, we have the great reason of environment. So, again, we are in a climate emergency and that means that because it comes from greenhouse gas emissions, that every emitting nation and community in the world has a responsibility to act on climate change, including us. And so, how buses can play into that is that buses are less emissions-intensive than cars. We have found one study at least where buses are thirty percent less emissions per passenger at average occupancy and up to eighty percent less emissions, emissions-intensive per passenger if you have it at full occupancy. So, naturally, we want to find ways to get as many people who are transporting themselves on road to take their transit by bus, where we have less emissions then. So, naturally, promoting wider public transit use becomes a sort of low-hanging fruit solution to combating climate change.
So, investment. So, the removal of fees will most likely lead to greater youth. And also, from greater use, then you'll have more social acceptance, by meaning that more people, even people aren't youth, will start using the bus more, which would increase the amount of money you could make from fares. And also, having more users provides the opportunity to upgrade routes and frequency for everyone using the bus service. And that means we can upgrade our bus service to something that is really esteemed within the community and something that everyone uses. It'll also help everyone on the road and businesses transporting their goods or just people trying to get around, because there'll be a decrease in traffic from less cars on the road. And this is also just a possibility to get fut- future revenue from continuing riders, or later, if the buses become free for everyone, it could benefit tourism by providing easy access to the coast and all that we have to offer.
So, on from our main reasons to implement this change, we have to look at potential routes to implementation. So, looking at potentially how students could board the bus, we could see it that with the upcoming B C Transit UMO cards, which will basically be like our version of the the mainland's tap onto the bus, their compass cards. These cards, we could just have students receive them from their school every single year that they're in the school, or if they are in post-secondary maybe, or they do online education, they could apply to receive these cards or take a card that they already have and get it linked to them so that the fare is paid for them. And these cards would last one year then, with every single year that you're in education. And you could apply to renew these every year, then also as a way to reduce plastic waste instead of giving new cards every single year. Alternatively, a sort of fantasy option, but it would be really awesome, is if students receive their student IDs that they get every year, but now with the sort of ARFids, like the little chips in the card that allow you to tap on. If students got those in their student ID cards as basically a way to make the students have less cards overall and give more purpose to our current student ID cards, but this would require coordination with S D four-six and B C Transit. But, so, it may be a challenge, but it would be really awesome to have.
So, we'd also like, in conjunction with that, like to request the bus drivers in school program. So, this would be for grade eight students who are just beginning high school. And it's, would be really important because it gives an opportunity for students to become familiar with the buses, because around grade eight is when people really start like moving into using buses. So, by like having that opportunity for people to have a bus driver come into the school, learn about the system, learn how to like request to stop, it really would help students feel more comfortable. It would also give a friendly face to the system of bus drivers, because for a lot of people, it can be scary. So, like knowing a bus driver, knowing that they're not like some just scary people, they're just nice people, will really help people for wanting to catch the bus.
So, ultimately, in order to make this policy change happen, we do need further study. So, in order to implement this, we understand that the S C R D has a very rigid budget and they need to understand the full financial implications of what they're accepting. So, this sort of cost for this policy change would be in terms of lost revenue, and that would not be in lost revenue for resulting new riders, because we are expecting that this program would increase our number of bus riders. But in terms of our budget from now, this cost would just be in lost revenue relative to how many current riders we have. Although, currently, the S C R D has no data on youth ridership or any number of, like what, which groups of people are riding the bus. We only know the current number of students on the Sunshine Coast. For example, there are just about one thousand two hundred fifty students in Elphinstone Secondary, Chatalec Secondary, and the Sunshine Coast Alternative Schools, and approximately one hundred fifty Cap U Cal X A campus and commuting students who commute into the mainland. With the upcoming rollout of the Sunshine Coast Transit UMO cards, we understand that this will gain the ability to track which groups of people are using the cards, as they'll have some sort of associated profile with the cards. So, when they tap onto the bus, then it would go into a database which groups of people are using the bus. And from that, we'd be able to gain an estimate of how many people, how many youth are currently using the bus. And from that, then be able to generate an accurate estimate of the cost of implementing this program. Additionally, we also recommend making some sort of select committee or focus group with students throughout the Sunshine Coast to gain further input on their thoughts around this program and how best to roll it out. So, thank you very much for considering this investment and we'll now pass it off to Anna Latanzi for some further remarks.
Okay, thanks. So, I wanted to also mention that I'm a member of the Sunshine Coast Climate Action Network. And that's really the issue for me that provides the impetus to kind of go out and, and look for ways to create more resilience in our community and ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So, I just have a few comments about transit and the place of free student transit in, in that system. So, historically, transit's been seen as a lifeline kind of service designed for people primarily who don't drive or don't own cars. And it's been in the past characterized by limited service that's led to a negative feedback loop where a conve- lack of convenience leads to a limited ridership, which leads to further service cuts and so on. More recently, however, many people are looking to transit to be much more than it's been in the past. That's happening really at all levels of government, from the federal government providing, funding directly to local transit, which it hasn't done previously, to the provincial government as part of its strategy around climate change, mandating that B C Transit increase ridership while reducing G H G emissions, and as well mandating that children twelve and under in transit ride free. B C Transit also is making it more convenient. There's a number of initiatives that B C Transit is undertaking, but a couple that are making it more convenient for riders to use the bus include things like Next Ride, which has been recently implemented, which provides real-time bus location information, as well as UMO, which has already been mentioned, which is going to make it more flexible and convenient at the fare box. The S C R D as well in recent years has continued to expand service in terms of frequency as well as ri- areas, areas of, of bus service. And that's going to continue, it's proposing to continue in the, this coming year with increases to the ninety express and Handy Dart service. So, support for free transit for students over the age of twelve is in line with these efforts and follows from them. Free student transit would enable an economic opportunity and community well-being on the coast, and it would improve the Sunshine Coast Transit system. The ideal here is to have a positive feedback loop where convenience leads to increased ridership, leads to better service and so on. And the implementation of free student transit moves the needle in that direction. So, I just want to take a little aside here for a moment. We received a letter of support from Vancouver Coastal Health yesterday. You have hard copies, but I wanted to highlight one piece of information that was included. And it's regarding a study that was done in twenty twenty-two, a survey of two hundred and twelve grade eight students in this district, S D forty-six. That's the, sorry, two hundred and twelve grade eight students, that represents seventy-seven percent of the grade eight cohort. And they found that only three to six percent of students use public transit to travel to or from school, while forty-three percent traveled to school by car in the morning. And twenty-one percent travel home by car in the afternoon. So, those were numbers that were hard for us to find. And one of the things that I wanted to talk about in my presentation is the question that's being asked, can transit be a viable alternative to the personal vehicle? That's a question that's coming up as a result of concerns about climate change. So, I'm imagining a situation where, for example, a household currently uses two cars. If that household finds transit convenient enough that they can make some of their trips regularly by transit, then perhaps they'll be able to reduce down to a one-vehicle household. And that's a solution to climate change, but also it's an economic solution. And that's becoming more and more important as we see inflation and other factors making it really expensive for families to, to live on the, on the Sunshine Coast. Free transit for high school students trains the next generation of transit users and supports their families. For students of Capitalano University, many of whom are training in vocations and skills that will be directly put to use in, on the Sunshine Coast, free transit will be an important support. And in the community, free student transit also provides an opportunity to be a point of pride in our transit system, the fact that we are, we'd be able to support students in this, in this way. In the short term, free transit clearly benefits students themselves, but in the medium and long term, it would be the community as a whole that would benefit.
Thank you for the presentation. I, before I forget, I want to make sure we, as a committee, pass a motion to receive all reports and items on our agenda in addition to these two pieces of correspondence, moved by Director Toth, seconded by Director Gabias. All those in favor? The motion carries. And looking, looking for direct, director questions to the delegation at this point. Director Stamford, did I see your hand shoot up?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's good enough for me. I can't see the zoom anymore. Oh, now I can, yeah.
I would just like to thank you for coming, presenting this. You had me at hello. I'm a consummate public transit user, have been my whole life, and I, I just think that moving forward, we have to see this as the norm and private car usership seen as the, the outliers. My question would be, there's a couple of things. Have you had a chance to do any research about other transit systems that do have free use up to a, a certain age or school use? And also, you talked about how you could encourage grade eight students to use the bus, and I agree that tends to be where they, they use it, they start to use it more. But how are you looking at the challenge of encouraging older students to use the bus, given that the friendly bus driver ploy doesn't usually work with older students? It's kind of the opposite. So, if you've had any thoughts on how you can encourage older students and how you could make it cool for those students to also use public transit? Thank you.
Well, I can answer the question a little bit on the, on other places where free student transit's been offered. City Victoria has offered it on a ongoing basis, and this is called the Youth U Pass Program. It's for students thirteen to eighteen years. They travel free on B C Transit. They're required to provide proof of age and residency in order to use it. In addition, Whistler has had a pilot project, which started in twenty twenty, and it's been renewed every year since, including this year. And it provides free passes for all Whistler Secondary students, and that includes homeschool as well as online school students. Funding came for them from increasing daylot parking fees. The students at Whistler High School, they have a twelve-month pass, they swipe that through the fare box, and they work with the school photographer to enable the production of those passes. Kid Matt's another opportunity. They had a one-year pilot project starting September first of twenty twenty. They provided free fares for all students attending Kid Matt's schools or homeschooling. And high school students were able to board simply using their student pass. I don't have information about whether that's ongoing at this point. Those are the ones that I know about.
And I can speak to, sorry, I have a little bit of a cold. I can speak to the how to incentivize high school students to use public transit. Actually, recently, in Elphinstone Secondary, I have produced one poster, I've made a few copies, and that poster is trying to encourage high school students to use the bus. And I try to highlight in that reasons that are more pertinent to high school students, older high school students especially, why to try to consider using public transit over private vehicle use. And I try to highlight there also the cost disparity of using personal vehicles, how they can be quite expensive now, and especially how that's getting more expensive now as you use, as gas prices increase and also vehicle prices themselves can increase, whereas public transit's staying pretty flat and overall, it's a much lower cost. And also, the impacts on the environment and also decreases in traffic, how combined if you use public transit, it has many benefits for the community and yourself.
And, and then just one other, one other thing that we've talked about, as I mentioned, B C Transit has quite a few initiatives happening, and it might be beneficial to ask a representative from B C Transit to come and talk to our high school students about what they're doing in, in the face of climate change.
Director Backs.
I cannot express how much I support this initiative. It's, I think it is a step in a direction that we need to take in order to, to try to mitigate our, our footprint. There's so many, so many parts of this that are just moving in the right direction. I think equity to families that cannot afford transit. At the very cheapest option, it's a, it comes to over three hundred dollars a year for a single student to, to travel on bus with a bus pass. My son has been thankfully a lifelong transit rider, and, but he doesn't always, doesn't always take transit. The, he, when he was taking the school bus, he would have to leave an hour before school began in order to catch the school bus. When he takes transit, it's fifteen minutes before school begins to be, to get there. And so, and when he doesn't take the school bus and, and asks me to drive, that takes an hour out of my day. At the very cheapest option, it's a, it comes to over three hundred dollars a year for a single student to, to travel on bus with a bus pass. My son has been thankfully a lifelong transit rider, and, but he doesn't always, doesn't always take transit. The, he, when he was taking the school bus, he would have to leave an hour before school began in order to catch the school bus. When he takes transit, it's fifteen minutes before school begins to be, to get there. And so, and when he doesn't take the school bus and, and asks me to drive, that takes an hour out of my day and impacts my productivity, as well as, as putting more greenhouse gases into the atmosphere, puts more cars on the road. And I believe that when students have a, a history of riding transit and become used to it, when they transition to adulthood, they're going to continue to be transit riders. So, I think this is a win, and I don't see, I, I would need someone to argue with me to try to convince me that lost income is an actual thing, because I don't believe it is. I think this is something that we can give to our community that would benefit everyone. Less cars on the road, less pollution, less lost productivity from parents having to drive their kids.
Director Backs, do you have a question?
No, I don't.
Okay, well, I'm first asking for questions for the delegation. And then if we get into any kind of motion the board wants to make, we can talk about our, our stances at that point. Director McMahon, questions?
Well, drat. Do I have to, all right.
Well, well, if you want, we, we can dive into that. I just, priority is questions?
I'm interested if they're going to do any more research with our staff on the various fare options like UMO or using student cards, because that sounds very interesting, for reasons that I will get into at a later time.
On if we're working with staff?
Yes, on the fare options and maybe with the school district too, on whether they want to get on board with, with, with this?
Yeah, yeah, we have previously had a conversation with Shelley Gagnon and Ahmad Kedwai, and that's where we learned about the upcoming UMO pass, and that's expected to roll out, I believe, in April or May. And with that then, if, I, I believe it would make just the most sense to be able to give that to students or have the combined student ID card. And other than that, Kale?
And the S, S D forty-six is also like really on board with it. They just sent in a letter of support today. Unfortunately, it was just too short to be able to have printed copies for all of you, but they're on board with the initiative, so I think they would be willing to cooperate.
Director Henderson?
Thank you, Chair. I guess I'm wondering, do you have an ask of the S C R D today? What would you like us to do?
Yeah, so I'm asking that then the S C R D works on finding out, just starts to work on, like, moving towards implementing this policy change. But in our presentation, why we are highlighting the need to do further study first is because we understand that it may not be possible to immediately work towards implementing this. And also with the budget talks currently in process, but the budget planning actually happens earlier in the year. We understand that it's unlikely, very unlikely, that this will be able to happen in two thousand and twenty-three, but we are hoping that possibly this could be adopted in two thousand and twenty-four onwards. But then so throughout the year, the S C R D could maybe work on doing all the foundation to be able to accept this for the next year.
Okay, I, I'm about to look to our, our general manager, Shelley Gagnon, to speak to this too, and it's wonderful that you've already met with, with our staff about this and taken the initiative to do that. Yeah, I think, I think especially considering some of the comments we've heard, in, in strong interest from the board and support, I think our, our strongest interest is how do we keep up the momentum here too? I mean, I, I've, I've worked with students for a number of years as a school trustee, and sometimes, like, we, we saw the names of two students who, who already came to this board and moved on. So, how do we keep up the momentum of some, you know, a group of students who've really taken a lot of interest and done research? And one, one of who will be, whom will be moving on in June. Let's, let's get the most out of them while they're here and really, really interested in moving this issue, this issue forward. So, how can we do that?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you very much to the delegation for their presentation. I would like to suggest that we have met with this group in advance of this delegation, had an excellent conversation and have very, some aligned thinking. It is on our work plan for two thousand and twenty-three, which the board would have saw in our service plan over the past few days, what, that were just adopted. To be looking at this, there is an outstanding resolution still on, on file to be addressing this from two thousand and nineteen. It just was put on hold during COVID. So, in, in my mind, I'm not sure a motion is required, because it's already on our work plan and there's already an outstanding resolution. So, I look forward to working with our manager of transit and fleet and a group of interested individuals as represented here today to pull together some planning in preparation for potentially a two thousand and twenty-four budget proposal. Thank you.
Director Backs.
Is it possible for you to refresh us on what exactly that, that project is at the moment? There was a previous motion by a previous board put together. Can you?
Through the chair.
Through the chair. Can you, can we get that brought forward and review it at the, like, now?
And now I will pass that to GM Gagnon.
Thank you for the question. So, the resolution remains on file. It's from two thousand and nineteen. I don't have it in front of me, but it does suggest, and I think that your delegation alluded to what it suggested in terms of exploring the opportunity for free transit for youth, and as I believe one of the delegates mentioned, now expanding that to include post-secondary students. So, that's suggestive, the resolution. And what is in our service plan is also suggesting something very similar, that we continue to explore that, and that would result in a staff report, and if there is a financial implication, that would result in a two thousand and twenty-four budget proposal. So, we do see that as something that we want to work towards in two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you.
I want to take a moment to acknowledge Counselor Kroll here too, who's been, not only is he chairing our, our new accessibility committee, but he's been working for several years now with, with our student representatives in Gibson's, and he's been really, really key in, in supporting, supporting this work and, and the students' advocacy. And connected to that, we have this accessibility committee in Gibson's that will continue to engage the students and try to move, move this kind of work forward. And my question is, how can we, I know, Kale, you're on the district student leadership team, which connects with other schools. How can we, how can we, or is, is, are there plans to engage Chatleeh students, especially considering there is transit there? And how do we keep moving this, this going and with student advocacy in the Seashell area?
So, if you see there, there's also a letter of support from the district student leadership team, so that is from like students, there's two students per secondary school. So, it's something that we talked about a lot, so there's a lot of interest, especially in the Seashell area from students attending Chatleeh Secondary.
And use the network.
And.
Use the network to contact everyone, like spread to the schools.
And so, the D S L T would be like happy to work and like, because it's a net, it's a group of students and all schools to help support this and work towards it, because we do have representatives in all schools, so we're talking to students constantly throughout all the schools in this area.
And, and the alternative schools represented there too? Yeah, because I know they, they've got another interesting perspective on this, because I think alternative school students often go to school at different hours and have more flexibility in their schedules. Okay, I see no, I, I want to, I see no other hands here. I think, yeah, okay, one more. Director Gabiass?
Thank you, Chair, and through you. There was mention in here of a focus group or committee, and I'm wondering if it's, it'd be worthwhile to have one for the S C R D, or should we just piggyback on the ones that already exist?
I think I'll look to staff for that.
Thank you, through the chair. So, my suggestion would be that would be all part and parcel of the planning that we would do, is how do we engage staff? And the delegation has been great in supplying us information and ways of connecting with students, including their involvement or the involvement of the student leadership team. So, how we investigate to bring forward a report on this would all be part and parcel of that. If you're looking for something more formal as a, as a board, I think that's perhaps a different discussion. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'd like to thank the delegation for reintroducing this concept to us and showing, showing us that, that there's a lot of, lot of energy, renewed energy behind it, and our staff as well for, for meeting with you and moving this forward in, in the next year. And I think the board definitely unanimously looks forward to where this goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So. Did I miss? Well, we, we finished the questions, didn't we?
Sorry, Don, I took a phone.
Do you want us to talk to, to Shelley about data collection? Okay. She'll be back. Yeah, sorry, we kind of just went off track, like, we, we should focus on questions at the beginning and, and then I feel we did start to talk more about comments and, but, okay. I've got a, I've got a question from, we're still on this topic. We didn't, I didn't mean to shoo the crowd out before, one more comment here. I didn't realize we had one, but it, it is, it seems like it is a question though. There's a question for staff about data collection from Director McMahon. Director McMahon?
Well, as you know from my ranting at the board table, one of my frustrations about trying to plan transit is how little data we have on our ridership. And one of the problems with the little data we do have is that the concession fare lumps together students and seniors, so we don't actually know who's using the bus and where they're going. So, it seems to me that this is a unique opportunity to, to actually drill down and find out more about our ridership. Do you think B C Transit would be helpful in this regard? And even would they consider doing a better job of data collection themselves if we could demonstrate the value of that?
GM Gagnon?
Through the chair, thank you very much for the question. So, that is the whole purpose of UMO, which is the name of the vendor for the electronic fare system that will be coming in, in Q two, later in Q two. So, I have a board report that will be coming forward in March to introduce that, that program. And the whole purpose behind it is data collection, which we have no methodology to do, nor does B C Transit at this point in time. So, at that point, we're going to be inundated with data, as well as the data that we get from NextRide, which tells us where people are getting off, where they're getting on, data we've never had before. So, the manager of transit and fleet and I have already had numerous discussions with B C Transit about the data and the data dump, which, as you all know, sometimes can be overwhelming. So, we're trying to sort through what is valuable data, how we access it, how B C Transit provides it back to us through some sort of dashboard. All of that are conversations that are going on right now, as B C Transit is just introducing their, their fare, their electronic fare system in other jurisdictions as well. So, it's coming, and I, both the manager of transit and I are very excited about it, because it really should be driving our business decisions, and so we look forward to getting that data. I say that just also realizing that we're not going to start getting that data until later on in the year, so it is going to take us some time, but we're going to, it, it's a benefit, so it's, I'm very glad that it's finally coming. So, hopefully this would be something, because you're right, we, trying to determine who's on our bus right now is anecdotal, and so we do look forward to some hard data and working with B C Transit on what is good data and how do we get it. Thank you.
Okay.
So, just to clarify, they are going to actually start collecting demographic data? So, when I purchase a UMO card, they will ask me how old I am, for instance?
Thank you for the question. It will come back to how we charge for fares, and so that is the forthcoming report, because we have to change some things, some things with UMO, and so that will be the forthcoming report that comes to the board in, we're hoping in March, where we talk about fares, and then the fare would be attached to a demographic, so I'm not asking you personally for a demo, for, you know, personal information, but the fare is tied to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that's a next step to look forward to, I guess, in this discussion, is that, that reported in March. Director Paul?
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Chair. I would just suggest too that the delegation has connections to the school. They can put out their own information gathering too, to what other students use the fare, because I do know that there's student rates, so the transit has those beginning numbers also. And then maybe like, Cap, you can put out a little student survey, say who's using transit stuff, and, and start getting data way ahead, because they would have it from this current year and stuff, right? So, there's some other possible avenues of information that we could gather sooner rather than later, and that might help out. Thanks.
Thank you. Unfortunately, they're not in the room anymore, but I know that, that, that is in their plans for sure, the student group, and Shelley acknowledges that too. Thanks. Are we ready to move on to reports? So, we have a lot of reports in this particular agenda, and after that, we have a, a new business item that could take some time. So, it'll probably just run out the discussion whenever, whenever we have, until whenever we have to end. So, we've, we've tried to structure the agenda for some more substantive items at the, at the beginning, and hopefully some more straightforward ones from about, about number seven on, so that we can move through those quickly and get to number, number fifteen in particular. Is that, so people are ready for their, their basic questions for those, those reports, I hope to, from about seven to thirteen? That's, that's my hope for, for this meeting. But we do, there is a priority item to start, number three, which is the Association of Vancouver Island and Coastal Communities Resolution, Modernization of the Local Government Act. And that's on page twenty-two of our agenda. Could we have a quick, just staff introduction of why, why, why we need to deal with this immediately as our priority item?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So, this report is the S C R D's final opportunity to approve resolutions to be submitted to the Association of Vancouver Island and Coastal Community for their, for their conference coming up in April. The deadline to submit the resolutions is February ninth. So, in consultation with Director McMahon, the following resolution has been brought forward for the committee's consideration and then board approval.
Okay, and we have a recommendation here. This is pretty, Director McMahon, do you want to make the, the recommendation to move this forward?
Sure, I would be happy to move the recommendation on page twenty-two.
So, moved, seconded by Director Gabiass. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. And on to number four. See agreement on that? So, our item four in, under reports is grant opportunities, proposed comprehensive land study project. And I'm going to ask for an introduction to this one, particularly because I don't think it was in our agenda setting anyway, so.
Thank you, Chair.
Oh, no, it was, it was, okay. Yeah, we're mainly doing this one now, because it's, it's, it's kind of in connection with the next item, with our, our GM of planning here. GM of planning?
Thank you, Chair. So, this report relates to grant opportunities associated with a proposal that the finance committee considered at the meeting that concluded yesterday. And staff's only comment beyond. staff's only comment beyond what's in the report would be that the, the grants that are referenced here are probably most suited to the community aspects of that proposal. The committee may recall that the, the proposal I've written included both a corporate space or land needs and community space or land needs. So this would be on the community side. And please answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, G M Hall. Generally, I find the, the board's pretty supportive of applying for grants. But we've got one question here from Director Backs.
It's not a question. I'd like to move that we
Okay, great.
accept the recommendations as stated on page
Seconded by Director Toth. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor of the motion? The motion carries. So I think we're done with that item. On to item six, item five. This is also G M Hall with his quarterly four slash year-end report of the Planning and Development Department. It's an extensive report. Therefore, questions and discussion? I'll ask G M Hall if there's any, anything more to add to it, or any highlights?
Nothing to pull out specifically. I would note that managers from the Planning and Development Department are in the gallery if there are detailed questions that the committee would like to hear from those members of the team. Thank you.
Welcome, managers. I think we've got some, some members of the gallery who aren't managers of the Planning and Development Department, but we'll, we'll be asking you. Maybe, maybe they're in the online? Okay, they're on the line. Okay, they're not in the physical gallery. Director McMahon?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for the, the very thorough information in this report, particularly around the workload in, in the planning department. I think that's really helpful in terms of understanding the challenges that we've had, and, and understanding the, the pressures behind some of the budget requests that we've been looking at. So I appreciate that very much, but I think I'll leave it to some of the newer directors to see if they've got some questions, since this, I think, will be their first quarterly report. Thank you.
The pressure is on. Newer directors. Director Stamford?
I, I could look at this for hours. There's a huge amount of information. I, it's too bad that it's come in right after three days of budget information, so I didn't have time to pursue it as much as I wanted. I, I also thank staff for putting this together. Honestly, I just highlighted one quick question, was on page 75 of the package. There's transit operations, claims around different kinds of injuries. Honestly, I want to know what other bodily motion means in terms of injuries. Oh, it's the next report. Sorry, I skipped over it. I will hold that question, but thank you again
Okay, we'll be, staff will be ready to answer that question when the next, next item comes up. I'll just comment, and yeah, it has been a very intense week for us. And one, one comment that I'll make to newer directors especially, too, is that these quarterly reports are really helpful to look, to look at for a longer term, even if we may not have immediate questions right now. They're, they're helpful to refer back to for information. Looking to Director McMahon again?
Perhaps somebody who hasn't gone can go ahead of me and they'll
Okay, Director Lee.
Yes, this is on page 30, bottom page. We ended up hiring a planner, too, instead of a senior planner. I was kind of figuring out, trying to figure out how that helped and what the difference was between those two positions.
Look to G M Hall to address that question?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. More, more horsepower, especially when we've had the quality of folks joining the team that we have lately is hugely helpful. And the difference between a planner two and a senior planner is a little bit related to experience and a little bit related to qualifications. But by settling work a little bit and reorganizing how we are assigning projects to our team members, we're confident that this collusion will move it forward on the priorities that the board has identified for, for planning and on keeping up or catching up with our operations. Thanks.
Thank you for that answer. I'm looking to Director Toth. Oh, there's a, I've got. Well, it's, you're, you're the, you're the, one person hasn't spoken yet.
Thank you, Chair. Looking on page 52, the very last page of the report, the bylaw enforcement is listed here. And I think I've asked this question in the past. I just don't remember the answer, but without getting too detailed, I see that the District of Seashell was the subject of 10 bylaw enforcement complaints. But, so I guess the question is, are these water-related? Because I'm not sure what other bylaw enforcement the S C R D should be doing in the District of Seashell. Thank you.
Good question. I'll look to staff generally for that one, as I don't know who might know the, the detail there.
I think Manager of Protective Services, Matt Wright, could offer some clarity on that. Well, he, he could if his audio was cooperating. But Chair, I can, I can confirm that, yes, these were water-related, and it was part of supportive work that our bylaw team did to support our infrastructure services during the local state of emergency and other E O C operations. Thanks.
Thank you. And Director Lee, I'm sorry, did you actually have a follow-up to your previous question that you're in line for? So we, we may as well go to that first if, while we still remember the last one.
Yes, I was, I was trying to get at a, at something with that question. I believe a planner, too, has less experience than a senior planner. So if we needed that, if, if that's true, and we do need that added expertise in the planning department, what would be the plans to get that expertise, added expertise into the planning department? That was my question.
Maybe longer-term plans for the person to work their way up. But I'll look to, I'll look to G M Hall.
Thank, thank you, Chair. I would, I would note the, I would note the budget proposal that the Finance Committee considered earlier this week as, as part of the answer. And Manager Jackson may have further comments.
Thank you for the question through the chair. The planner two position that we have is rated so that it can be hired as a planner one or a planner two. So what we had to look at was the experience that we were getting through the competitions. And there is, through the job classifications, certain triggers that allow us to hire as a planner two or a senior planner or a planner one. In this particular case, though, we'd gone out twice looking for a senior planner, and we're unsuccessful. So we had to look at retooling and, and thinking about where we could get the horsepower in the team, just to be able to fill the vacancy. And as G M Hall has mentioned, the, the round, it has helped to oppose something that we'll look at trying to further reject the planning department to look to the future in our projects ahead. Thank you.
That sounds like a good and sensible approach. Director McMahon?
Yes, I'm back to bylaw complaints. I was dismayed but not altogether surprised to notice that Area E is the epicenter of bylaw complaints lately. I, I was wondering if this is normal? Are we always scofflaws in Area E? Or was it anomalous? And was it related? Are my, are my people watering their lawns when they shouldn't be? And any, any general comments from staff?
Do we have the nitty-gritty of what's going on in Area E?
Before, before I ask Manager of Protective Services, Matt Wright, if he has any insight there, I would, I'd also like to highlight that because we know that there is interest in these types of questions, and as noted in the service plan that was presented at Round One Budget, we are revamping how we capture and report our bylaw enforcement statistics. So going forward, we could have more detail on which to report and to build our, our strategies. But Manager Tryte, I don't know if you have any detail to add on the situation in Eltonstone?
Thank you for the question. Unfortunately, no, I don't have them broken down as fences per, per area, but as G M Hall stated, that's something we are looking to be tracking in, in 2023. So for upcoming quarterly reports, we should be able to have some more detailed information for the board.
Also, certainly a question any director can ask offline, too, right? Do we, do that dedicated email address? Am I right this time in saying that's the best? I hope? Yeah, okay, I see nods. Director Lee?
Thank you, Chair. I noticed on page, it'll be top of page 31, the reopening of the front counter services was to begin in January 2023. I was wondering if we made that date?
And to staff?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. We, we have actually made that date. We've reopened the counters, beginning with mornings on Tuesdays and Fridays. That began January 10. And we're looking to further expand that service through using a software known as Microsoft Bookings to actually include appointments in the afternoon. So that is something that we're projecting to have on, in play for end of February, early March is the hopeful timeline for that. So we're happy to have that service reprovided, and we've seen a busy counter since we reopened it. Thank you.
Director Backs?
I just wanted to thank staff for preparing this informative report. It's going to help myself, and I'm sure some of the newer members up here, to shape what it is that we want to do, knowing more of what's going on. So, thank you, staff.
That's a perfect way to close things out. So I will thank you as well. And I'm looking to, whoa, we were not, Director Backs, you spoke too early. We have another question. Director Lee?
Yes, sorry, I tend to go down in order with my questions. So it, and I always have lots about this. Of interest to me was on page 32, and it mentions that there was recurring multiple complaints involving pads for the placement of RVs. I didn't know we actually had bylaws to control that. So I was wondering if I could say some comments on that one? Is it actually the building, or what the heck causes these complaints?
Good question. Look to Manager Jackson?
Thank you for the question through the chair. So our bylaws have regulations in terms of the amount of time that an RV can be parked in a camp spot. That's 30 days. And so in the event that there is an RV that is parked longer than 30 days, that's one trigger where enforcement action could be taken. Additionally, what we've found is that many of these campgrounds that are going up are going up without checking before they make the alterations to their land to make way for the campsites. So much of what we've seen is actually enforcement action related to land alterations and development permit areas, where folks have gone in, looked at a zone, and maybe thought, oh, I have the potential for 10 campsites on a property, taken an excavator to the site and gone in there and put camp sites in place in development permit areas. And that's been the main trigger for enforcement. Additionally, I would mention that there's also Vancouver Postal Health considerations with the campsites as well. So sometimes it ends up being multiple agencies involved in this enforcement action. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question on that. That's, that, how, how often roughly has that happened? I know you don't, you may not have the numbers right in front of me here, but I heard you kind of say this has, suggested this has happened multiple times in the last quarter, I guess, that people have been excavating their properties for RV sites in a non-conforming way?
Thank you for the question. Through the chair, there's been a number of land alterations that we've had ongoing. Some of them relate to RVs, some of them do not. Typically, how our bylaw officer enforcement action takes place is through complaints. So it's when we hear a complaint about something that's gone on in a property and investigation begins. And at that point, a determination is made as to whether or not a bylaw infraction has occurred. And if so, what that bylaw infraction is and enforcement actions made on a, on basis on what is actually taking place on site. So in terms of numbers, I don't have those at hand. But I do know that there are many informal RV campgrounds on the coast. And in terms of enforcement, it is on a complaint basis, just to ensure that things are done safely and according to our bylaws. Thank you for the question.
Well, it's an interesting trend to take note of, as well as the, the fact that complaints are being made about it as well. Director McMahon?
Yes, I just had an inquiry about RVs, because people are, you know, they're buying property and thinking, well, maybe me and my friends can just park some RVs here, because we can't afford to build. Do we have anywhere on our upcoming new website that will explain to people the rules around things like RVs and tiny homes and secondary dwellings in, in a sort of an easy-to-digest format?
That might be
Chair, that's an easy one. Yes.
Okay. I was going to say that might be a bit of a rhetorical question. Yeah. Director Lee?
Yes, I, I would, I believe I'd be remiss if I didn't mention on page 40, I found it extremely interesting reading to find that in, for instance, how well all of our fire departments are doing. But the Gibsons and District really caught my attention with 34 of them having obtained interior firefighting qualifications. And in fact, 19 of the 46 can drive the trucks. That's indicative of a very well-trained fire department. And all of our fire departments are getting there in a pretty big hurry, as I look through those statistics. So congratulations to them, I think, is in order.
Yeah, I know in Gibson's, it's been very ingrained in the, the culture of that fire department for, for, ever since I first became a counselor, that training's a very fundamental part of, part of what they do. Yeah. Okay, well, going back to Director Backs' earlier comments, no, I'm just saying, thank you very much for the report, this comprehensive report and your, your answers to our questions. Thank you, staff.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, committee.
And we have another, a semi-annual report here from Corporate Administrative Services up next. So I will look to, look to directors for questions on this one. Director Lee, is are you, are you, no, okay, Director McMahon?
As I alluded to before, and on page 53, we, we have a new website coming. Is there going to be, like, sneak previews or a ribbon cutting? Or are we gonna, like, smash a champagne bottle over it or, or, or something? Just asking.
I think Manager Buckley is probably ready to answer that question?
Yes, thank you for the question. And yeah, we're very excited to launch the new website. Director McMahon?
Uh-oh.
We'll, 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 we'll make sure that the unveiling is done in a manner that, you know. Hello? Can you hear me okay?
You're breaking out a bit.
Breaking out? Okay, I'll, I'll try again. And if I'm, if I'm breaking out, I can just come on in. And yeah, so we will be launching the website end of February, start of March. And it's absolutely our intent to ensure that we roll it out to the community with as much fanfare as possible.
Thank you. And I see Director Backs next. And I thought, Director Stamford, did you have a question for, so, yeah, just, just a reminder, yeah. Director Backs?
Yeah, I'm looking at the, the charts on page 58 that talk about record and information management, retention, research, request, accuracy, and efficiencies. And it seems that instead of getting better, things are getting worse. instead of getting better, things are getting worse. And it seems that drawing, getting, bringing records, I guess electronically, is taking much longer than it is to do a physical search. And you're, and the efficiency, it seems to be dropping over the last three years. Is there a reason for this? Is it, is it teething issues, or is it, are you learning new systems? What's going on there?
Corporate Officer?
Thank you for the question. I guess I'm, I'm not really interpreting, it's fairly stable as far as what I'm looking at. Maybe, can you point me to the trend you're looking at?
I'm looking at the trend in the very last chart on page fifty-eight.
Okay. And?
Yeah, records successfully produced. In 2019, you had a hundred percent. In 2022, you had an eighty percent success rate.
Oh, yeah. I mean, sometimes the records don't exist. I note she has a couple of asterisks here. I'm sorry, the records manager is not here in the meeting. Just give me a second. So if you go to page fifty-nine, at the top of page fifty-nine, the explanation there is what appears as a decrease in records produced or an increase in response time is for the most part attributable to the request being very complex. And so the requested information may not be within our custody and control, or the record may have never existed. And I think that's just indicative of the increasing volume that we're seeing as, in terms of remote working and more staff needing more access to electronic records.
Thank you for the answer. I'm not here to grade you. I'm just, I just, sometimes we have a hundred and twenty-two pages to go over after going over five hundred and thirty-seven pages and things get lost. Thank you for your answer.
Director Henderson.
Thank you, Chair. I'd be remiss if I didn't gloat a little bit that seashell.ca upgrade went live yesterday. The other one is, we get quarterly reports from other departments, but I noticed this is semi-annual. Is that, as a newbie, is that for a particular reason?
Corporate Officer or CAO?
I know at one time we were bringing forward quarterly, and there was direction at the time from the board, I believe, that we moved to a semi-annual reporting. It was taking up a lot of meeting time, and they felt the information was sufficient twice a year.
Thank you. Director Stamford.
I hope this isn't a throwaway question, but I am just wondering, on page seventy-five, transit injuries and claims, what does other bodily motion mean? I am just trying to get it around my head.
Do we have someone who can answer that question now? Manager Parker?
Thank you, Chair. And through the chair, over this past while here, we actually had a, an issue with our gate leading into the Mason Road yard. The gate itself is opened first thing in the morning by the first person arriving, and the person sustained an injury because the electronics were malfunctioning. So they manually opened it and sustained an injury, and then it got repaired, and then it happened again with a different person. So those are the, those are the two records. And that's, that's the type of injury that occurred. Thank you.
Director McMahon?
Sure. On page, uh-oh, where am I? Page eighty. I'm looking at statistics on my SCRD accounts, which we can see are steadily growing. And so if constituents ask me, why should they sign up for this service? Could I, could I get a little public service announcement that I can share out there for the, for the benefits of getting in my SCRD account, which actually I don't have?
I see our CFO is popping up to answer that one.
Yeah, I think a couple of folks aren't here, so I'll take a start at the answer. Really, it's the timeliness and ability to pay for your bills online. So for instance, a lot of people want to pay their utilities bill or other types of bills by credit card and may not want to have to make a trip to the SCRD. So definitely has a lot of benefits even from a GHD reduction because they don't actually have to get in their car and come here. It also, you know, sometimes things get lost in the mail, and you can actually get things immediately. So when utility bills come in, you get it instantaneous. You can also search your history. So say you lost last year's bill and you wanted to know what you paid, there's a historical transaction record on there. Also, for those that may want to pay on a monthly, weekly, quarterly basis, they can do incremental payments and those balances just sit on their account. So there's multiple benefits for people to use the service.
Thank you. We went over that report very well sequentially there. I didn't even have to flip back and forth. Unless, Director Lee, do you have any more? No, okay. Thank you very much for the report. And we're going on to number seven, which is an item on Board Constituency Expenses Policy Amendments. And there is a recommendation. I think they're pretty basic amendments, but I'll just ask for staff to give us a quick summary of what the amendments actually are here.
Thank you, Chair. Happy to do so. This had been brought before the board before, so returning board members will probably recognize it. After the last time this was brought forward, staff were asked to provide a bit of clarification on three particular items. One was what actually defines a constituency expense, ensuring that the policy addressed production of constituency newsletters and websites. And we also were bringing in an annual stipend to correspond to the bring your own device policy that's there. And then as a bonus, a fourth bullet item that wasn't identified previously was just that we noticed that in order to align the policy with other policies, we needed to just add the bullet around constituency expenses being submitted within sixty days. So those are the changes. Happy to take any questions.
Director McMahon?
Yes, one thing I don't see on the list of constituency expenses is Zoom accounts. There's probably a less proprietary wording that you could use for that, but I've found that having a paid Zoom account has been a real benefit for me, and I have expensed it through my constituency.
So does our policy explicitly prohibit that? It doesn't sound like it. If it's, yeah, okay, so it's, that's fine. Looking for a motion for the recommendation? Director Gabius?
I'd like to move that we accept recommendations as listed on page eighty-four.
Seconded by Director Stamford. Any discussion? Director Bax.
Yeah, so the, this extra hundred dollars a month that you're offering that we're looking at right now, that's, is that for those directors that have chosen to have their own device rather than take the device that's, that's been offered by the SCRD to work with?
The CAO?
Yeah, thank you for the question through the chair. No, that's for all directors. Regardless of whether or not you've accepted an SCRD device.
Any more on the motion? There's, we're looking at a motion now. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Director Bax opposed? Would you like that recorded?
Yes, I would.
Okay. And related to the last item, item eight is an update on our Director constituency and travel expenses. This has already been received, so I'm just wondering, are there any questions on this, this item? I heard, Director Bax. Oh, Director Stamford.
Yes, I'm not quite sure I understand the, the report part on page eighty-nine, the table. I understand, how I've read this is, for instance, Area F, I've overspent on constituency expense and underspent on travel. Is that a problem? Or does that go to zero as of January first?
I thought it was more of an annual concern about...
Like, does it start January first?
Oh, I see. Manager Wing?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This report is more of a report to, report on budget variance in terms of the total constituency expenses and, and travel expenses that are incurred throughout the year. So what you're seeing there, most of, actually all of that would apply to the previous director for the area, and those are expenses that are incurred up to the year. On our annual statement of financial information, which is presented with financial statements in April, we report on the total expenses paid. So that's the formal public reporting that we do annually. This report is part for board's information on corporate and it's provided...
Everyone, I can't hear you very well.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. Yeah.
I thought it might only be me, but I saw some other looks, so, yeah.
Okay, yes, I had this problem last time. My apologies. This report is provided quarterly. It is intended to highlight the total expenses in constituency and travel expenses that are incurred throughout the year in relation to budget. So that directors have an idea of where they stand overall in relation to the approved budgets for these items. The expenses you see will mostly be related to the previous directors. So it is for the calendar year amounts expensed through the calendar year.
I have a clarification.
And this is last, yeah, calendar year. So it's, I don't think it's anything to worry about. It's nothing, nothing can be done about it now.
So just a clarification that expenses are incurred on a calendar year. These constituency and travel expenses are a calendar year versus a budget year, which is March thirty-first?
Thank you for the question through the chair. The, what's presented here is the calendar year and our budget year, our fiscal year aligns with the calendar.
It's also the calendar year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Which, yeah, is confusing when we're doing our budget process partway through the calendar year. Welcome to local government. Director McMahon?
Yes, I just wanted to note for the new directors that the last couple of years, we've come in well under budget for expenses because we weren't going anywhere, right? But this year is going to be more expensive because typically the first year of a term, people go to more conventions and training opportunities. So at the end of the year, the leftover money, I saw that on a TV commercial, what do you do with your leftover money? On page eighty-nine there, so we have a remaining budget of twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-six, eighty, sixty-six bucks, and it gets rolled back into the budget. Like, we don't have a reserve for this. So if that's any help, thanks.
Thank you for that explanation. Director Bax?
Do I have to make a recommendation that this be accepted?
No, no, as I said, this has already been received, so it's just questions. Okay. Then looking to item nine. Again, I believe this is, this is just a report to the board that's already been received, so I'm looking for questions. It's, we have it here for useful information. Okay, agreed. Moving on to item ten. Oh, one came up. Director Henderson?
Thank you, Chair. I note in here, these are about the budgeted unissued debts, I'm sorry, on page ninety-three. And it's referencing that we'd be using that money in the spring of 2024 for water meters, the second line of that table. Does that mean we won't be starting installation until then, or will we be using our internal funds first and then borrowing for the balance?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So that particular point is correct. We would be using interim funding until we actually would issue the security issuing bylaw to MFA. And I also wanted to comment that we will be bringing something forward as an amended item to the board today to do the security issuing for Church Road, just based on some new information we received from MFA as far as when they're going to be issuing their spring debentures for this year. So that should be part of an amended agenda as we near close that project. So...
Okay, so on the, on the water meter borrowing, I guess my, my question is, I believe we had AAP approval to borrow a maximum amount. If, and the bids are, we're out for bids now. What happens if those bids come in a lot higher than the AAP approval?
CFO?
We would have to find another source of revenue because we can't exceed the loan authorization bylaw.
Right. Any other questions on this report? Just, sorry. Is there another follow-up? Okay, Direct, Director Lee, and then Director Bax.
Thank you, Chair. I hope I didn't miss the answer to this one, but I noticed on page, let's see, what page is it? It's ninety-two at the bottom. The, our percent is going up pretty good on the five-year and ten to thirty years, even though it seems small. Is there some rule of thumb guideline we should be looking at to say, hey, we borrowed enough? That's one in curiosity question.
CFO?
Thank you, Chair. I just want, maybe some clarification on did we borrow enough statement? I think I just need a little more context as to what that means, because the rates are set by MFA. And so as, as we know, we can only borrow through MFA as a local government. So...
Perhaps I've read the table wrong. Those are just the rates. Those aren't our budget ratios.
Those are just the rates that were available for MFA.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Director Bax?
Just a clarification for the, there's a graph at the bottom of page ninety-four that shows two different, two different lines, a blue line, which is the regional district, and the red line, which is not identified. Can it be identified?
It's member municipal debt. Probably the table was cut a little off, a little too short.
Sorry, can you explain that?
You're through the chair. I can explain it. Member municipalities, the arrangement through MFA is that member municipalities borrow through the regional district. Hope that's a general enough explanation, or you're detailed enough, I should say. Yeah, okay. I'm not, I think we're on Director Henderson. We've got, we've got hands up still, but we're, I think we're back to Director Henderson?
Thank you, Chair. I think Director Lee raised a question, maybe asked a question that he wasn't intending to, but I think it's very appropriate. What, where do we stand? I mean, benchmarking is an important part of what we should be doing and assessing. And I'm curious, what is our level of debt compared to other comparable regional districts? And in that sense, are we borrowing enough? Are we borrowing too much? And I don't really expect an answer to that today, but I'd rather fulsome bit of investigation than answer it later. Thanks.
Are we borrowing enough?
I did add, or are we borrowing too much?
Well, I think the auditors would probably tell us that. CFO?
Yeah, so the SCRD has a debt management policy. And so what it says in the debt management policy is that we, we will try to, we do measure that we... we do measure that we don't exceed the fifteen percent debt servicing limit. Although a regional district does not have to adhere to the debt servicing limit like municipalities do, we have put that in our policy as something to measure against, to understand where we are from a fiscal. We also highlighted in the asset management policy and and other discussions related to a service-by-service perspective and where we're seeing some of the trends per service because each service has to be distinct from another. We are different in that sense from municipality. So we're looking at the health of the borrowing of each service. And we have some services that are trending higher than the debt servicing limit. So we're not contrary to the policy because it doesn't stipulate for the service from the overall regional district's health. But it's really important to factor in the debt servicing for each function. And so you are reviewing that as part of the capital plans. So you're always, we're already seeing some of the what's happening with each service as far as how much they're having to carry. So that's something for the water service, for instance, that we're carefully tracking because there's some existing debt, some debt we're taking on. So we've got that over sixteen to eighteen million dollars scheduled from a short and long term, and you've just approved some more to come online, and there's much more to come. So that's something we're going to have to track quite closely. From a regional district, we do participate in some analysis on a yearly basis from one regional district to the next, and it is very difficult to compare apples to apples because, for instance, the regional district tends to trend quite high from its debt servicing because we have things like our recreation facilities and whatnot. We are starting to trend a little bit lower, but as you see, we're now on the upswing based on that chart on ninety-four. So it is something to be very mindful. And again, it really depends on what other local governments are doing from an infrastructure project perspective. So, yeah, we analyze all of that.
Director Toth.
Thank you Chair. I think I heard the answer in the CFO's comments there. But looking at that debt servicing ratio on page ninety-six, right at the very bottom of the page, I believe that that debt servicing ratio encapsulates everything above it that's been budgeted but not necessarily issued. I'm just looking for confirmation that that's indeed the case. Thank you.
CFO.
That is inclusive of everything, yes.
Any more questions on this report? Not yet. This one. I'm looking at that a little further on. So item ten, annex I, is contracts between fifty thousand and a hundred thousand. This is a by by law, this is a quarterly report. And there are, I think this one's pretty basic because there are only two contracts here. One's only four hundred dollars over fifty thousand. We received this already. Are there any questions? Seeing none. I've got a request for a recess, too. Is that, can we, okay. Yeah, let's do that now. Yeah, I I was ready to keep five minutes as the request, so I'll go with that. Item eleven, which is, we're live, yeah, parcel tax role review panel. And I think this requires some volunteers. Director McMahon.
Yes, I was going to suggest that all the early morning people who are here at about eight-thirty might like to volunteer for this.
I thought you were volunteering yourself. Okay, we've got Director Gabius. Director Lee. How many do we need here? I need to, three, okay. Director Stamford. Are we going to have an election then? Wow, that'd be the first election in VC history for the parcel tax review panel. Okay, okay, Director Bax really wants to do it, so. The members be appointed, so looking, we we need a motion, right? That, so we've got a recommendation that Director Gabius, Directors Gabius, Bax, and Lee be appointed as our parcel tax role review panel. Seconded by Director Stamford. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Any further questions on on this? Nope. Going to. Going to annex K. Item twelve, request or proposal for domestic hot water distribution system reconstruction. Just catching up on that, item twelve. I see a manager here to speak to that.
Yes, thank you Chair. The report brought before the committee today for consideration is for the award of contracted services to implement the recommended plumbing system changes at the Seashell Aquatic Center to resolve the water temperature control issues affecting the showers. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'm looking for a hand. It's not the what I've expected. Is there a motion to approve this recommendation and to go ahead with this recommendation? Seen no questions. No, Director Toth. Moves a motion, seconded Director Gabius. Discussion of the motion? Here we are. Director McMahon.
All right. Yeah, this is a pretty dramatic increase over the budget, which seems to be the way of almost everything involving the Seashell Aquatic Center. But could we get a little perspective on how it's tripled in cost? Thanks.
Okay, back, yeah, it's a question. I'll allow that. It's not on the motion, but yeah, a question for the manager.
Thank you for the question to the chair. That's a great question. The original project budget was established based on consultant advice from the preliminary design proposal received in October of twenty twenty-one. There are likely four factors that have contributed to the cost increase. Higher-than-average historical inflation, ongoing supply chain issues from the pandemic. There were some minor changes to the scope of work between the preliminary and the final design, and there was an absence of responses from local contractors, which adds travel and accommodation costs to the project utilizing an off-coast contractor.
Thank you, Director Henderson. Okay. So we're, we have a motion under consideration, which is the recommendation. Director Bax is ready now.
What are the ramifications of delaying this project?
Thank you for the question through the chair. This has been an ongoing issue at the Seashell Aquatic Center for several ear- years, and it does pose a safety risk to some of our patrons because we do have some quite significant temperature fluctuations in the showers.
Director Toth.
Thank you Chair. I'm just wondering what the, wondering if there might be positive implications to the cost if we were to look at re-tendering this, recognizing that we were only, we did only receive one compliant bid. I'm wondering if if staff contemplate whether we may actually receive lower bids if we re-tender or if this is just the market we're in right now.
Thank you for the question through the chair. It seems to be a trend with a lot of tenders we're putting out, where we're getting one bid, sometimes no bids. So we did contemplate re-tendering it. We just don't feel that it would potentially achieve better value for the project.
As Director McMahon has noted, noted, it's kind of the same movie over and over again. We've, we have a motion before us to accept this recommendation. I'm seeing no more discussion on this. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? So I think I I saw a three-to-three vote with a couple of non-votes. Is that correct? Yeah, I'm going to call it again. I I'm just going to speak to this, too. I'm not hearing any any alternatives from directors here. So I'll be voting in favor of this because I'm not, I don't see our alternative. I'm really be happy to hear some, but it doesn't seem like we've come across any. All those in favor of the motion? Yeah, okay, all those opposed? The motion carries. Do the votes in opposition, yeah, recorded? Directors Bax and McMahon opposed?
Chair.
Director Henderson.
Thank you. I just, I I guess I I really struggled with that, and I just want to make the note that it's, I support it, but we have to find ways to pay for it that come from somewhere else. You know, this, to approve this means we've got to find other.
The motion has been passed.
I know, well.
Onto item thirteen, annex L. So this is, this is in charge of Catherine Lake Campground, the revenue lost during the twenty twenty-two operating season. And I see the manager of Parks Services presumably prepared to answer questions. Or do you want to give any intro to this? That sound is really bad.
All right, maybe I'll just answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions from directors? Director McMahon.
I was just going to make a motion to get this on the floor. So I'd like to move the recommendations on page one oh three.
Seconded by Director Lee. Discussion on the motion now. Director Stamford.
I have a question of clarification.
Usually we do the questions first, but I do when I'm the chair, anyway. Go ahead, though.
And just out of interest, we're looking at compensation for revenue lost. If there is extra revenue with this particular contract, does that extra revenue come back to the regional district? Or is that absorbed by the contractor? Theoretically.
Manager. Can't hear you. I think we heard you better when you came closer to your device, sir.
Sorry about that, I'll lean in.
That's better.
With, yeah, thank you for the question and to the chair, with a service contractor revenue.
No, that's not working again. No, that's not working again. Are you in the building? Okay, G M Ganjal.
Thank you Chair, I'm pleased to step in and answer the question due to the technical difficulties. So the way that the contract was organized was that we calculated based on historical revenue and built that in. So if the camp operator is able to generate additional use of the campground, then that revenue stays with them along with any expenditures that they incur based on more people in the campground.
Thank you, Director Stanford. Your hand's still up, Director Bax.
So just to talk about this contract that we have, and rather than reading through, rather than, for the public, I'd like to know, has this loss of revenue been caused by actions taken by the S C R D?
G M Ganjal.
Thank you Chair, thank you for the question. So I believe that as the report states, the damage to the campsites were done by the flood, and we had hoped to get in to repair the damage to the campsites before the site opened. And the contract was negotiated before this, so it was a matter of timing, but we were unable to get in due to environmental considerations and timelines. And so it was, although it wasn't directly our fault, it was not, we weren't able to repair them, and so the campground operator was not able, not able to use those as agreed upon in our contract.
Director McMahon.
Yeah, I think that's pretty straightforward, and I just wanted to note that it's important to have good campground operators. It's not necessarily easy to get them, so if we can, you know, treat them well and keep them, that would be a good thing. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in front of us, and I see no more discussion or questions. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? The motion carries. Onto the next item, which is Annex M, item fourteen, 2022 drought response plan summary. And I see Acting G M here. Do you want to introduce this at all? And also Manager, Manager Walke.
Thank you Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you Chair, I don't know if this, this report really needs an introduction. I think everybody understands what happened this last year. It was a challenging year for the community with the reduced consumptions, and them reducing consumptions and not being able to do what they wanted to do with water. It was a really challenging year for staff, working day and night to try and keep everything going. And that also included Towne Gibson's staff, which I want to, want to note here that their, their help was great. I really look forward to Church Road coming online this year, metering, and in the future Langdale. And I also want to note the great cooperation and communication between all the local governments that contributed to getting through this together. We're, we'll accept any questions, thank you.
Questions? Director McMahon.
Lessons learned? Did, this, this was a pretty unique set of circumstances. Did we learn anything that will inform our drought response going forward? Hopefully, we won't have any more droughts, but huh?
Always, I'm sure, yeah.
Thank you Chair, one, one thing that I noted there was the Towne Gibson's cooperation with the, the water, with their staff and our staff, we quickly came up with a solution on how to manually get more water back into our system. That was certainly, certainly a learning opportunity on the fly. I, I certainly learned that it takes a lot of work to, to go through this, through this E O C. It was, was certainly all hands on deck, not just operations, the entire regional district. I think it, it certainly opened a lot of other people's eyes in, in the regional district and other governments that cooperated with us on this, that, that how in-depth it is to keep the water flowing. Do you have additions? No, thank you.
Yeah, again, I see this as a really valuable report going forward for, for reference for the board. I see Alton, I see Director Toth.
Thank you Chair, no specific questions, just a general, general appreciation for the S C R D staff and the Towne Gibson's staff, and, you know, other members of the public and staff that got pulled into this, consultants, everybody. When we had the drought in 2021, we thought, this is the end of the world, it can't get any worse than this. And then we had this last year. And I think the fact that we managed to make it through and our taps didn't run dry speaks monumental amounts to the work that everybody did in this, so I just want to say thank you.
Director Lee.
Yes, I would just, I'd like to highlight some figures that I had made to, to watch through this thing. And one that strikes me is the number of days of a stage four. It was a hundred and four. The next closest was forty-one last year. And other than that, it's, it's like sixteen, eighteen, twenty. The work that the staff did to MacGyver Solutions together to get us past something that no one could possibly anticipate was awesome, so a thank you to them.
Director McMahon.
Yes, and I'm sorry, it was getting late last night by the time I was getting to this end of the agenda. But the impact on our water treatment plant, in the last couple of years, we've had a record, I think, high volume at the treatment plant when we had the heat dome. And then we've gone into record low volumes at the treatment plant, both of which exceed the, the limits that the plant was set up for. So would you have any comments on that?
Thank you Chair.
Manager.
Thank you Chair, yes, that's another thing that staff were working on with consultants. The plant itself has pumps that are designed to pump between eighty and a three hundred and ten liters a second to the plant. And as you noted in the past, we've had to squeeze out three hundred and twenty liters kind of thing. This year, we are trying to get down to fifty liters a second at the plant, and staff were having to modify the plant operations to, to get down to that low. And we're looking into potentially adding another pump that can flow at that low flow permanently in the pump station. So preliminary work is taking place for that. Thank you.
Director Lee again, or is, was that still?
Yes, no, this, this is the last note I have here. I know that we had a bulk water filling station in Langdale, and we used it for business and farming, but we didn't offer it to residential users. I was wondering, I probably had heard the answer before, but I forgot it. What, what was the logic for not using it for residential users?
Thank you Chair, the filling station was set up for commercial businesses. I'm not exactly sure why we, we didn't have residents there, it was challenging to monitor. We had equipment on a fire hydrant, a check valve that we, we instructed people how to use the hydrant valve to get water from the hydrant, so that's why we are limiting it to people in the industry that have that use, that ability.
Follow up.
Just a follow-up comment, we do actually have one of those yard hydrants on the South Pender so that people can go get water, so it seemed like an awful good idea, so. Anyways, that's something we can talk about later, but that's what prompted my question, and the answer was a great answer. Thank you.
Thank you, and this, this report has been received. So thank you staff for, for being here for our questions and our appreciation for, for all the work that has gone into the, the past several months. And the, that concludes the report section of the agenda. And we're now under the new business. Sorry? Which, which I suggested that we title Water Summit Debrief, which I think is open to all directors in that context to, to talk about the, the Water Summit. I, I have one concern, question that I want to bring up in general. And Director Henderson has a more substantive proposal connected to the future of water that he'd like to discuss with the committee. Director Lee, is, is your hand still up from the last question, or? Because I, I think we, we could take some time on, on Director Henderson's proposal. But, so first I'll look, look to other directors just on the, on the general, the debrief of the Water Summit, if anyone has any, any concerns or, or questions coming out of that session, which was the, the Water Summit that was held recently. See Director McMahon and Director Lee?
I thought it was a good meeting. I appreciated the background. The background from the Seashell Nation on water on the coast, but also some of the dates. So it, it was good to put, put together the expansion of our water system because we're kind of focused on Chapman, but all the other systems and the demands and how this all fits in sequentially. And so I, I look forward to getting some of this information. It's, recently I was trying to look up dates that various infrastructure on the coast was built, and it's not on most of the local government websites, is. So just as, as knowing like that the dams were built in the seventies or the nineties, or our water treatment plant is well-covered on our website, but other key infrastructure, it's helpful to know that when you're, when you're trying to look at our overall system. So thank you very much, it was, it was a good meeting.
Okay, and somewhat of a suggestion there too, and yeah, I'll, I'll take that under advisement for, for the Towne Gibsons as well, trying to communicate some, some of that history. Director Lee.
Yes, thank you Chair, I, I have some general comments about the Water Summit. First of all, I, I thought it was a great venue, it's, it was easy to hear, and it was spacious. Two things I really appreciated. The thing I enjoyed was Stephen Festcheck's history, and I had to chuckle when they mentioned a wooden sluice to bring water to the, the Seashell. And when I grew up, a huge advancement was this big old water wooden pipeline delivering water from the lake. Water used to spurt in all directions, so when I was listening to this, I, I imagined that again. So I just had to make those two comments, and I thought it was great. And I don't know if it's a question for staff, can I ask that? Okay, I know that it was envisioned as a series of meetings. Is staff working on a follow-up meeting, and is there any idea when we might have one? I appreciate knowing that.
C I O.
Yes, through the Chair, thank you very much for the question. We haven't set a date, although the preliminary discussions, we've scoped out a, a potential agenda already for session number two. The date isn't set. We had envisioned it to be either late February or early March, depending on timing and recognizing that the Seashell Nation is in the midst of an election as well. That was one of the reasons we were looking at that date. If there are requests to try to move that up, we can certainly reach out to staff from the various jurisdictions to do that. We'd also be potentially reaching out to the Squamish Nation to participate in the next session, which is going to be more, designed to be more holistic in nature to deal with sort of the larger area. The first summit was really focused on the immediate projects or the short and medium-term projects on the Chapman system, but there would be a larger conversation to have at subsequent summits.
Thank you, Director Bax.
Thank you C I O for answering some of my questions. I think that, yeah, waiting for the Seashell Nation to have their election and, and settle into their new government and waiting for March might be a great idea. I really was very impressed with the, with getting the, the four local governments together and discussing this issue of the land that we share. And I think keeping up the momentum for these type of things is, is really important, and making it more of a regular event to discuss other issues that we have in common as well, I think would be a great idea. Then, all in all, I thought it was a, it was a really, a really great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Bax, I'll, I will comment here too. Put myself on the speaker's list, but my Zoom isn't working to take my hand down, so. I'd like to comment that the, the town definitely looks forward to, to our participation in this event too, and sharing, sharing information and our approaches and, and our water system and working together with the S C R D. And I think there's a lot, I appreciate that last, that last report from staff and how, in highlighting how, how the town and S C R D worked, worked so well together in recent months. And I think that's just the beginning, there's, there's a lot more that can be done on, regarding our water sources in the Gibsons area. So we're, we're definitely looking forward to that and having some input from our staff. Furthermore, there's one, one policy issue I, I really wanted to touch on, which is, which I raised at the meeting, which is metering. We, again, this is, this is an area where we could probably share, share information more about how, how it's worked in the Towne Gibsons. And we've seen it have such an incredible impact, which has been reported by the town and reported by the S C R D as well. And from that perspective, I would urge the S C R D Regional Water System to implement the volumetric rates as soon as possible. And even, even if, even if the entire regional water system is not metered yet, I, I would like to see the consultant's report consider a system where a fair flat rate can be established for, for the areas that haven't been metered and volumetric rates be introduced for the, the areas that have been metered. Getting that, getting that integrated into the system as soon as possible, because that's really had that much effect in Gibsons. And I think considering the, the conditions, the emergency situations we're in at the regional level, that, that work needs to be done and, and integrated as soon as possible. So I did hear a comment on it that there were kind of some considerations, judgments being made at the staff level about, well, would that be fair to everybody? I really think that's a board consideration. So at some point, I hope that's kicked back to the board for our discussions. And I, I guess that would make sense when the consultant's work is being done. But I'm just wondering when that consideration can be made, because I'm hoping that that, I know it can't be done in this budget year, but it can be done. That consideration for the water rates to be changed can be something the board can talk about for 2024. Looking to, I'm, I see staff nodding. So for the record, that is going to be something that we look at in this, this consultant's report, is that possibility of having a flat rate for the areas that aren't metered yet, a fair flat rate and volumetric for the areas that are metered. There's some staff discussion going on. I see a lot of nodding heads though, so I'm feeling pretty encouraged by this. Director Lee, do you want to speak to this?
Well, just to add to your question, I was wondering if we could even get it done earlier than 2024, so.
Standing as the rates have been set, right, by the, yeah? Sure, yeah. Sure, yeah. Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add on to this particular point, because I only found out yesterday that the City of Richmond actually has a split billing method, where you can opt in to metered rates. And the option is there for flat rate or metered rate billing. And they've actually, they've reached a point where something like eighty-five percent of their residents are already on the metered rates by going through an opt-in process. So there may be option to explore metering within the service.
That is not something I would recommend, but maybe it's something else that could be.
It is part of this conversation. There are other jurisdictions that have done a split system.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'd certainly be worried about the, you know, people who, people who want to use a lot of water. Except maybe, maybe they've got it so the flat rate is quite high, so there's an incentive to opt in. That would make sense. Is there any, any staff comment on this discussion yet? On how this might look? Yeah. CFO? Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So of course, we were mentioning during our budget deliberations that this particular, the rate review structure is underway with a consultant. There's a lot to consider to implement something like this, and so we hope to have some more later in the year as far as options. As far as expediting implementation, that would be a different consideration, and that would require a significant undertaking by divisions that don't currently have that on the work plan, especially our IT and Finance Division, because the actual billing, two different components and methods would be, would be, would be an undertaking that we don't really have contemplated right now. So again, as the consultant's report gets completed, we should hope to bring more information in the summer or fall of this year.
I am interpreting significant undertaking as impossible, just to be, is that fair?
Nothing's impossible.
I, yeah, I appreciate you saying that, but. Yeah, I think, I think just for the board's expectations, we're, it's sounding to me like we need to look at the consultant's report and look to 2024. Is that fair? Yeah, okay. I'm seeing nods from staff again. Acting GM?
I'll add one more piece to what CFO Pro mentioned, is we do have work underway on the technical side. So how we collect our data, we've been collecting water metered data through, not through a cloud-based system, we moved to a cloud-based system last year. Late last year, we started doing it properly. It helps, the way we collect the data, now we can transfer it more easily to our billing system. So there are a lot of pieces that are underway. We're working with IT to ensure that that data can now be seen through my SCRD, not quite there yet. But there's some other pieces through what we're calling our water data program technology. We have a whole work plan associated with that, and staff who are working on that on my team, and then also with IT, thinking towards if we were to bill differently, what would that look like? So there's certainly pieces on the backend that we do have underway.
Director Henderson wants to, Director Gabius, did you want to speak on this particular?
Thank you, Chair. I think everything I wanted to say has been said already, but yeah, I think the.
Sorry, I'm just about the billing, the water meter billing piece. Okay.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to talk about. Yeah, the Water Summit really highlighted the need for volumetric billing, not to make it fair to everybody, but also to incentivize conservation, because I'm not sure how we're incentivizing conservation right now with a flat rate. And when you see the graphs where the, yes, the water usage spikes when there's a drought, people are watering their gardens with water that's costing so much money to bring to their tap. So I'm really looking forward to seeing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Henderson?
Thank you, Chair. The, I think the piece I wanted to flag, it's, to me right now, it's less about billing and more about what Director Gabius just said. This is a tool for conservation, and it's a tool to incent, encourage people, and actually you can almost make it a bit of a game in a household of how much can we save this month? One, and a specific thing for staff to respond to, and pretty soon, I hope, I, some of the feedback I've had recently, all the new houses, and I'm sure Director Toth can correct me, but at least in the last ten or twelve years, have had meters installed in Seashell, but they're not turned on. So the users can't use the app to find out what they're using. That, to me, should be a fairly straightforward addition, and let that Mr. Jones and his family access that metering data for conservation purposes.
Director McMahon?
Yes, I, yes, it's been a long week. Could staff refresh my memory where we are in terms of making decisions about the drought management plan for 2023? When are we next looking at making decisions around dates or users, or whether we can find some solutions for farmers? Thank you.
Thank you for the question, and through the Chair. So at this point, we've presented the report on the drought response plan. We don't have any, we don't have a report coming forward that has bylaw changes that change water conservation regulations. We do have a report coming forward specifically on the engagement that we did in 2022 related to farms. I'm happy to provide more information. I think probably having the very long detailed report will help understand who qualifies as a farm. There are many definitions for farms. You heard one definition through the delegation a couple weeks ago. There's also other definitions. There's the definition that's currently in the bylaw. There's certainly some changes that need to be made to make the bylaw more consistent. So those, that will be brought forward in a future report that has been drafted.
Looking forward to that. Director McMahon?
Yeah, just wondering roughly when the report is coming? Do we, do we, I'm, I, there is some urgency because people are making decisions about planting.
Yeah, as we heard recently.
So through the Chair, I'm happy to speak to assurance. So at this point, the, anyone who is a water user has the bylaw in front of them. Every year, their, the water conservation from regulations for farmers have been stretched a little bit further, right? So two years ago, they added the two weeks, the board added two weeks for farms in stage four. Remember, stage four is an emergency. And then last year, the board made the decision to add stage four, that two-week exemption for class nine farms, which is different than the exemptions that are in one, two, and three, stages one, two, and three. So it's a different, it's very complicated. There's a very, it's actually a separate exemption for a wider class, which is class nine. There are over a hundred class nine farms on the coast. How many of those are food producing is a bit different. So that is the purpose of looking at the bylaw again and saying, who are these exemptions for? And then when it comes to the two-week exemption, that is what is in the bylaw right now. We know that we had significant drought in 2022. I think anyone that wants to use water outdoors should look at weather patterns, they should look at this report, and not anticipate that we are going to have better weather than we did this year. We may have Church Road online, but we will still have water conservation regulations in place. And it is possible that we will get to stage four, and that we will be in an EOC situation. It's possible that we could be in a state of local emergency situation, and we may look at businesses that have high water use, and we may make decisions to ensure that we have sufficient water.
Yeah, the CIO, and I know Director Henderson had his hand up some time ago to talk about another item that would be coming, but I'll look to the CIO first.
I was just going to point out that while these, these dates are never written in stone, that report is scheduled right now to be coming forward to Committee of the Whole on February ninth.
Director Henderson? This is your, your opportunity to speak to, I hope, unless you're talking to.
You want me to?
Okay, you're speaking to this, yeah. Yeah, well, that, that's what I thought was next on our.
Okay.
The attachment to the agenda, but first, if you want to speak to this item specifically, go ahead, please.
I wasn't going to speak to that item. I think it links into, whoops, sorry. I think I did that too soon, didn't I? No, I'm, I'm fine to wait until all your discussions have happened on the water information meeting.
I think all other, other directors have had a chance to participate in the debrief, so I'll ask for your presentation.
All right, thank you, Chair. You know, I take no pleasure in any of this, but the fact is that we are in an emergency situation. We're hearing even today, I just heard, I believe, the words Church Road may be on this summer. We, everything we're talking about is scarcity-based rather than abundance. What can we do to conserve? What can we do to shut down businesses? How do we save consumption of water? And, and I guess I'm here because I want to talk from a place of abundance. How do we get more water so that some of these tough decisions don't have to be made? And I'm concerned that, and I'll get into the specifics in a minute, I know some of you, I appreciate some of the directors and some of the SCRD staff joined the District of Seashell Council meeting last night, so you've heard much of what I'll be talking about. But it's, I think we've got to refocus the conversation. I fear that we have become, inured to a certain extent, that it's not possible to do something different, and I'm here to say I don't agree. I also believe that, well, I certainly can speak from personal experience, within the first two weeks of taking office, I signed two states of local emergency. I didn't do those things lightly. The impact on citizens is dramatic and the consequences, and I think we've got to keep that in mind. We talk about the costs of implementing different conservation measures or siphons or anything like that. Well, there's a cost on the other side as well, and that's to the taxpayers that are suffering because we haven't got enough water. So with your indulgence, I will take you through a quick presentation. And I suppose we all know that in 2018, four wells were drilled, they were tested. The best well that was tested at the time was Dusty Road. And I guess for those who may not be aware, I assume everybody here is, but Dusty Road is at the top right of this picture, and that's downtown Seashell, just the village. Very up closer, zooming in, this is where the new Seashell Operations Center is going. This is Dusty Road, going left to right across the screen. And the Dusty Road test well that was drilled is right here by the X. As a test well, from, and maybe let me back up. I, over the last couple of years, probably people have reached out to me, and I've been very, very involved. There's been, I'd guess, probably seventeen to twenty people that have reached out. There've been a mix of people from world-class experts to those who are very passionate about sourcing water and, but the bulk of them are independent experts who've chosen to reach out to me and asking what can they do to help. And I've taken it on as a bit of a mission for quite some time to listen to them and try and learn. Some are also in the business, in the industry, currently practicing or working. So I feel confident that the information that I've been given is, is valid and is worth us considering. The concern, I think, the people that I've been talking to, and I certainly share, is that the Dusty Road well was, was discounted in the assessments done by virtue of concerns about its future industrial activity, that's a potential over the long term, and concerns expressed, but, but they weren't evaluated or measured about potential risks of contamination. The important thing here is that Dusty Road, as is, as drilled right now, which is a six-inch pipe, will take a pump of a size that would generate fifteen hundred cubic meters a day of water. That's about a third, little less than a third, of what Church Road is expected to produce when it's online, and Church Road has cost us, we're being told, about ten million dollars. So I don't want to go on too long, but again, coming back to the issue of abundance, we need this source. We need more water. We need water from elsewhere as well. I know that the, our Seashell friends and neighbors have been assessing different possibilities that they have to provide water, and I hope that some of those will come. But we need, we also need resilience. Right now, all the water to West Seashell, Half Moon Bay, even, even East Portus Bay, comes from areas to the southeast around Gibson's by and large, Grantham's Landing, Langdale, and of course Chapman, further, further towards us. So there's a resilience concern that, you know, if some natural disaster happens, we could lose a whole lot of our water capacity. So that's another factor that figures into the importance of diversifying our supply. But the other piece to this is many of the discussions we're having, Langdale Wells, you know, Sackinaw Lake, Clahom, desalination, all these things that people talk about, those are years away, and we're talking about, I suggest, likelihood of a drought this summer, which has a huge impact on our, on our citizens, on our tourists. And we had a discussion earlier, a couple of people, ten years later, people still remember Tofino as the community that ran out of water. I don't want us to be like that. I want us to be remembered and known for positive things, not, not such, well, such unfortunate events. So the opportunity to use Dusty Road and the existing test well is entirely doable. Here's an outline of the, the approach that I believe, and I've been, I'm confident is valid. I should, as I mentioned earlier, I did take the district, my council, through this yesterday, last night, and the general consensus was that this should come to you folks rather than the district dealing with it. But the essential things are, we need to retest to confirm that everything that was done in 2018 is still valid, and to assure people that the risks of contamination are, if, if any exist, how would they be dealt with? So professional hydrolog, hydrogeological report would be part of this, signed and sealed, retesting the capacity, the quality, and that can be done in six weeks for a cost of less than fifty thousand dollars. If we get a good report, my, then my proposal, or my assessment is, we can put a quick RFP out saying, hey, we need a ten-by-ten shed, which would house the pump systems, the UV, the chlorination, that it's probably more than we'll need, but let's do it. We need, let's do it right. And so during the three weeks, we can get submissions, and then they can construct it. I've been assured that it would be less than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do it. Remember, we're not talking about running pipes from Grantham's to interconnect into the, the SCRD Regional Water System. This would be connecting into a nearby water main. And it's a smaller pump, and it's essentially an emergency system that would provide a source of water for the emergency that we are in. So not to keep going with too many of the details, but essentially, if we got into gear, and I'm saying today because it is an emergency and we are going to need water this summer, we could have water by Canada Day. So I'm here for the moment to suggest that this board consider the, really, item one on here. I think that everything in two, and to a certain degree, three flows from a successful result. I think that everything in two, and to a certain degree, three flows from a successful result of number one. I'm happy to, I've got lots of stuff that I could talk about, Chair, but I think, let's, maybe we just get to questions. Because it's a lot to absorb. I was working on this as late as four o'clock yesterday. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Henderson. One, one question I have for staff is just going back to that, that timeline of twenty, twenty eighteen. I, I recall that those, those reports of the groundwater explorations coming, coming forward. But I also recall, I think in twenty nineteen, there was a further direction from the board to take a closer look at Dusty Road as an option. No, that, that one may have been one that was abandoned. I don't know that. I know that was, that came forward at some, maybe it was at committee and got abandoned later.
Well, the drilling was done in twenty eighteen, but the reports were issued, one in early twenty nineteen. And then I defer, I think there was one after that in twenty nineteen.
Yeah, I guess, I, I especially remember it in the context of Mahan Road, because that's the one that the Gibsons really had its eye on. And there was a, there was a point where the board said, no, we're not going to look at Mahan Road. Let's look at Dusty Road instead, I thought. And I don't know what happened after that. I'm, I, I haven't had a lot of time this past week to dig into my history either. Manager, Walkie.
Thank you, Chair. Reading from the report that was presented on the January twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen. It was called Groundwater Investigation Phase Two Results, and that the Dusty Road site not be pursued at this time.
Okay, so that was a, a simple response from the board at the time. Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. I spoke to this at some length yesterday, or last night at council. I just wanted to go over a couple of the, the technical points. And then I have some different comments from last night. So we do have several acts that govern the provision of clean water in British Columbia. The Drinking Water Protection Act, the B.C. Water Sustainability Act, the B.C. Groundwater Protection Regulations, and the B.C. Public Health Act. Groundwater at risk of pathogens is not an optional treatment requirement or treatment consideration. When you're distributing water to other people for consumption, the government requires a much higher standard of treatment than if you want to poison yourself and your family. I've got firsthand experience with these requirements, and I needed to undergo a costly water upgrade at a property I own where I'm supplying water to only twenty-five people. So it is not something that may be required. It is something that will be required. I, I've also raised concerns that the test well was drilled at Dusty Road in the summer of twenty eighteen. And in the early fall of twenty eighteen, the foundation agreement was announced. And that looks at the expansion of gravel lands for the Seashell Nation up slope. And that looks at the shared decision-making model that the Seashell Nation and the province have undertaken. And so I, I haven't had an opportunity to speak to previous directors about this. But I speculate whether, if that foundation agreement had been released earlier or if it was a public conversation, if this test well ever would have been drilled at Dusty Road. Now, that being said, I am actually supportive of this concept at this table. I was quite opposed to it last night at council, and that's because I don't believe that the District of Seashell should become a purveyor of water. In twenty twenty-one, during the situation we had, where we thought, there's no way it can get worse than this, and we were talking about what happens if we run out of water, I did raise similar concepts with other directors and with some of the staff. So I am amenable to exploring this. I just want to make sure that we do it in a manner that is safe and fiscally prudent for our taxpayers, because I have heard concerns from residents who wish to remain unnamed, but raising concerns about the upstream potential contaminations. And, and, and potential actual legality of going forward in such an accelerated manner. But those are questions that can be answered if we proceed with some preliminary work. So I just want to leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Toth. Director Backs.
Yeah, I've had concerns from citizens about the, the possible contamination of this site and the, and the associated loss of confidence in our system should the, should this rather controversial well be, be brought into our, into online. I could see it possibly being a source for non-potable water for other things, but if it's my understanding, it's in an unconfined aquifer. And so to me, it's, if you take a sponge full of clean water and you stick it in a mud puddle, you start sucking clean water out of it. Eventually, you're going to taste mud. It's, i- if we pull enough water out of this well, we're going to be pulling water down the hill from the landfill, from the, from the quarries. And to me, as far as I know, that we've already put in the work to, to see if it would be a safe site, consider a, a good consideration for a water supply, because I think the due diligence has already been done. Unless somebody shows me that it hasn't been done, then I can, I can't support this.
Director Stamford.
Thank you, Chair. There was a, a graphic earlier in the report that showed the location of Dusty Ro- Dusty Road well. And then there was what looked like a lake right across the road. What was that lake?
Director Henderson, your presentation? Does staff want to weigh in on that question?
Well, Chair, I'll just, it's, it's a, a pond that the Lehigh deposits all their, their water to. And it's settled out in that pond.
And Lehigh is the, the gravel?
The gravel pit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I, I guess it, it's just that, it's location that gives me tremendous concern. I think we do have to look at other sources. I would like to see the full-scale ideas of where we could go. This could be one of them, but I'm not comfortable seeing us go ahead so quickly. We're talking about chlorination, but I don't think chlorination helps with heavy metals. It doesn't help, it helps with biological items, but not with non-biological concerns. I'm not sure we have the testing to cover all the possibilities of contamination that could come from the landfill. That is my primary concern, but given that, we do need to keep looking at other resources, how we can layer different kinds of water, options including potable, non-potable, to provide an ongoing supply to our population. The other concern I have with this is, I think it also pulls from the Chapman Creek watershed. If I, it doesn't, okay, that's a question I would have, is where does it pull from in the, the bigger picture? So those kind of questions are not answered. I'm not comfortable hearing from un, unnamed experts. That's another discomfort level I have. So at this point, I'm able to support it as presented.
I think Manager Walkie would like to speak to the, the. Sorry?
If I might, just to, to clarify, yes, it's correct, the, the pond. But there are wells, the, the, there are three wells on the mine site, and there are at least two or three wells along here that have been, some have been on operation for decades, and there's been no contamination discovered. Thanks.
Okay. Manager? Now we can, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. I'm trying to find the page in the report, but in the report, it shows the aquifer, assumed aquifer for this well includes part of the land, underneath part of the landfill, all the way up underneath the, the District of Seashell sludge lagoon. And it does show that it, it will impact part of the creek, and that's part of the concern. That if you start pulling water out of the creek, you have to supplement. This also, it's noted in the report that it, Ergans Creek, right next to it, may be impacted by drawing water out of this well. And a study has to be done to ensure that Ergans Creek isn't impacted. And that if it is impacted, you have to contribute back to the creek, like Church Road.
And that was from the initial twenty eighteen report that you're?
I'm referring to the Associated Engineering Report, twenty nineteen.
Okay. Director Lee?
Yes, I have various comments, but I'll just make one for now and then let someone else take a turn. The, there's a reason that the improvement districts have very graciously give us all of their water systems to operate. And during Walkerton, and shortly after Walkerton, both of the water districts in my area petitioned the SCRD to take them over. And it was because of the risk, and we are expected to uphold the public trust, and we are the water purveyor. And the reason I mention that is, that is not the reason why I, I am, I voted to not go to Dusty Road. The report that we got from the experts were very clear. They said the water was good. Nothing wrong with it right now. There was a lot of water there. They, they, we don't need to test that. We know that. The problem was, is that it was stated directly in the engineer's report that it's an unconfined aquifer, very close to no stored contaminants. And I took that to mean the landfill and the operating gravel pit at the time. I don't remember the details, but it is in the reports. And four experts said, do not take the risk. If the risk, if we take the risk, it's on us right now, and it's ongoing to the SCRD and the employees that we are asking to run our water system. The experts that said, do not take the risk, were environmental scientists, a senior hydrogeologist, a process mechanical engineer, and a senior water treatment engineer. And they signed the report. So it was very clear to me at the time, when I voted, why I voted that way. But I still am very similar to Director Toth, and there's many things to be explored. I've heard that we could use Dusty Road water for other uses, uses, which will help us. I've heard that we could use reclaimed water from the system in Seashell and dump it in the river and reduce our need, supplement the two hundred liters. I've heard that there's temporary solutions we could put in, like a mobile plant at Gray Creek. I've heard there's, perhaps we could parallel build and cut down the time it takes to implement once we get our license. So there's many things to be explored, and I'm all in favor of doing it. And I believe we even have a project that says, we're going to look for some more sources. So if we were to work together, and we agreed, yeah, we need to do this sooner than later, yeah, we, we could start doing that kind of thing, and we could do it in a timely manner and a controlled manner. That's my two bits worth, Chair, and that's my thoughts on that matter.
Yeah, I think I'll, I'll just say one thing, too. In that it's important to recognize that the Seashell Nation is going to be a necessary partner in any of these seashell area initiatives, and they brought forward some, some ideas at the Water Summit as well, but they weren't highly, they weren't the main focus of our Water Summit, largely because, as has been mentioned earlier, at this committee meeting, there's an election going on right now. So I think there's, it's important to acknowledge that the nation has been talking about some of these short, short-term solutions as well. And hopefully, pending the election, we'll be hearing more about that in, in future Water Summit discussions. Director McMahon.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to talk about technical stuff because I'm not the expert. But I am going to point out that a cavalier attitude to risk is what leads to subdivisions with sinkholes. Lots of people are eager to take a chance when there's an immediate gain in sight, and the consequences seem small and far in the future. But when things go bad, those people who get hurt start howling that local government should have protected them. Local governments are extremely cautious, perhaps we're too much cautious sometimes. And this board does have the power to act boldly. There are times when we should. But when it comes to the water that twenty-five thousand people drink and bathe in every day, that our very lives depend on, we have to be cautious. There is a ton of provincial and federal legislation around the provision of clean, safe drinking water, rules that were created in responses to tragedies where people died. To propose that we should move forward without approvals is rash, and it invites a world of grief from governments much bigger than us. I might also add that the last thing this coast needs is more makeshift, cobbled-together infrastructure created without proper process. That pretty much describes Highway one oh one. Today's quick fix has an unfortunate way of becoming tomorrow's nightmare. And what my constituents tell me is that they want permanent, robust solutions that they can count on for the long term. I understand that Director Henderson has done research on the internet and talked to a lot of people, including, apparently, experts. I'm not going to knock that technique. I've used it myself when looking into local issues. But when I prepare to spend taxpayer dollars on projects that are critical for public health, I will take the advice of qualified professionals, and the qualified professionals said, do not go for Dusty Road.
I do want to circle back here, just to focus discussion on, I mean, the proposal that was put in front of us. And like, the first step was, that was proposed by Director Henderson, was to embark on a hydro- hydrogeologist, another hydrogeologist's report on this. And I somewhat want to just consult staff with that, too, and that there's a lot of concern about safety of the water here. I, I mean, I, I do think it only makes sense that this proposal needs to be looking at more, more expert reports, and that is, that is what the proposal does. That's the first step would be a. So one, one step would be, would a fifty thousand dollar budget for a, a hydrogeologist's report address safety concerns that are being brought up? And, and would it, I mean, I think Director Henderson could, could possibly address this part, too. I want to, I want to get us refocused on the fact that step one here is to get a report to, to address the feasibility of this, and that would presumably address the safety as well. So I'm first looking to staff to address that question.
Thank you for the question through the chair. So, yes, additional, because of the likelihood of the interconnection between the nearby quarry is what was identified, and looking at the original report for the phase two, there was a phase two analysis done, that was done for this, the three wells, which looked at certainly Dusty Well, Mahan Road, as well as Church Road. There was a likely connection between what was going on on the quarry site as well as the Dusty Road well. So certainly under the Water Sustainability Act, there would be a hydrological assessment to be completed. There'll probably be a, if there's an interconnection, which there's probably identified that there most likely is, there'd be also, they'd be looking at fish habitat survey as well to see if there's any impacts. But certainly they'll want to look at a stream impact survey and see how the well interacts with the nearby wells, the streams, Ingraham Stream in particular, to see if there's any surface water impacts and stuff like that. So to quote, to identify, would fifty thousand dollars be enough? It's hard to say, but there'd be additional studies. And this is dictated not by, you know, us, it'd be by the province as they review the water, you know. Because certainly what you'd be looking for is a long-term license to. because certainly what you'd be looking for is a long-term license to extract the water. And those parameters, just like we're going through Church Road well, would be dictated by the province.
So yeah, it would need to be a report that meets that criteria for the province to issue a license based on safety.
And also, just to put it in context of the amount of permits that would be required, there'd be additional numerous permits. For example, I was counting how many permits we had to obtain for Church Road well. And there was 18 of them, 1-8, that's how many active permits we had to procure in obtaining for Church Road that we're still working through with the province and local and provincial authorities. To put it in context, so it's very complex. It's, it's just the reality of, of moving forward and obtaining, you know, additional water rights, it's just part of the process.
Thank you. So I think that, to me, that, that sharpens a bit of the discussion we're having, too, in that Director Henderson's next. And I'd, I'd like to kind of ask, based on that information, to Director Henderson, how do all these licenses and the need to wait for them and, and the suggestion that maybe, maybe your proposal is skipping over that part or going ahead without licenses, how does that fit into the timeline here?
Boys, there've been a lot in the last few minutes. First of all, yes, none of us are experts. Trust you're looking at your screens, because I'm looking at each of you. None of you are experts. This proposal is to get experts, and with respect, I don't believe our staff are professional hydrogeologists. That's not a criticism of staff, but we need the best expertise. Because I'm certainly not supportive of risking anything. But I am in support of getting water for this community, because so far, we have no solutions. We're, by, by virtue of not proceeding with this, you are essentially saying, it's okay, we can manage through potential droughts for the next three years. I'd like you to think about that. Okay, the consequence of not assessing this, not reassessing this, is, in my opinion, a likelihood that we will have droughts for the next three years. The impact on our community far exceeds the, the, both the money and the loss of face, the loss of embar, or the embarrassment that people might feel as a result. Turning to the approval process, there is a different process in the, the, for short-term emergency supply. The short-term emergency groundwater licenses are possible. And, and they could be done in this timeframe, is what the practicing professionals assured me. I don't know that to be true, but I'm here saying, look, folks, we got three years of no water all summer. Is it a risk? Yes, yes, it is. But the bigger risk I suggest is that the community has no, has no, or is on severe watering restrictions for the next three years.
Director Bax?
Yes, thank you. Director Henderson said, used the word reassess, reassess. So to, and my, my understanding is that this site has already been assessed and proved to be a risk that we were cautioned not to take. I understand that there's, there's a lot of water, but it would be a risk to put it into our system. I also understand that it, it would be advantageous to have a, a non-potable water supply that we could offer to the public or use on a regular basis. And that would be a, a perfectly valid way to go forward with the Dusty Road site. There are, there are other aquifers, there are other areas that we should be searching. Not an expert, but I did, I did find some Artesian wells that are shooting 150
gallons a minute, probably?
Anyway, there are other areas that we can search. I would, I would, I look forward to reports from staff as to what other options we do have. Church Road was a, I think, a win for us. It's going to, it's going to help offset some of the deficiencies within our system that we've, that we're finding. But it's not the, it's not the end of the road here. We still have to find some more redundancies in our system and bring in more water. And I understand your, your urgency, and I understand your, your hope.
Through the chair?
Through the chair. I understand the hope and, and urgency that is expressed by the, by the director. Thank you. But outside of a non-potable source, I can't support this initiative.
May I?
So I want to try to chair here a bit and move us, move us toward some kind of closure or, or, or moving forward on, on this issue, in that we don't actually have a motion on the table. So we're kind of talking like we do, we don't, this is a, this is a discussion. I don't know how Director Henderson would, would define some kind of satisfying conclusion to this, this discussion. So I guess I'll look for that, and our chair is next on, the chair of the board's actually next on the speaker's list. So maybe he can help provide some direction to move forward on this. But I'll, I'll look to Director Henderson, too, on, just on that question I have, on how do we? Where are we going with this?
I, I agree with you. I agree with you, Chair, like, we should probably have a motion on the table.
Some kind of parameters here, I mean, we, we are in committee. This was, this is an item on committee that was labeled discussion. But, but we are starting to talk about a, a direct proposal here, and are we, are we looking to?
Sure.
Put it forward as a motion and support it or defeat it or amend it, or? Okay, on, 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 this is on procedure?
No.
Here as well?
It is not, so.
Okay. I'll look to Director Henderson to see where, where he intends to take this.
Chair, I will move the resolution on the screen. And I can give that to our recording secretary.
Seconded by Director Bax. Is, Director McMahon, is your question related to this? We're talking about contaminants here.
It was related to the question of a short-term emergency license.
I think that's fair in the context of this, because this, this would have to be lead, leading into that being necessary. Yeah, go ahead.
I know that staff during the recent water emergency explored a lot of different options and did some really creative thinking about it. And so I'm curious if the option of a short-term emergency license was looked into.
Staff?
Thank you, Chair. I assume you're referring to the Dusty Road well, a short-term license, and no is the answer.
Well, in a broader sense, for any of the other, you know, really out-of-the-box, say Mahan Road, whatever.
Thank you, Chair. No, we didn't. Those, Mahan and Dusty Road are what we consider test wells, they're not production wells.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't at that point, I don't think. So we do have a motion. Are you working on kind of rephrasing it as a motion? But it's, it might be. Director Lee, on the motion?
It was on the motion, and I lost my question. The, before we, I'm not in favor of the motion, which I believe is what I should be saying here. And the reason I'm not in favor of the motion is twofold. We had a senior hydrologist look at this and give us a recommendation, and assigned recommendation. So it's hard to imagine another hydrologist reviewing somebody else's work and coming up with a different answer. So I'm, I'm quite confused as to what would we expect out of this. And the second thing is, if we start down looking at other things in front of projects that we got on the book and are expecting it to happen in six months, if we pass this motion, we must be saying that we want staff to redo their plans and put this in front of them. And we are going to delay other plans that we have. And some of the other plans we have are going to give us water if they meet the existing timelines in 24 with the meters and 25 with the Gray Creek. And those are known, and we have them in hand, and we're working to that timeline. I don't want to see anything that delays that. We've, we've had projects that jump in front of the line and do that. And it's, it's quite a risk that, I, I haven't seen something that would convince me. So that's my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, Director Lee, Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. Last night, my counsel asked that we have this conversation up here and that we move forward with this conversation, given that this is the appropriate venue to be having it. I personally have grave reservations about the timeline. However, the motion on the floor, I think, represents a respectable first step, so to speak. So despite my own personal opposition to the timeline and the manner in which that this proposal was brought forward, I will be supporting the motion on the floor. Thank you.
I suppose I, I should clarify, especially for myself, this, this would certainly be a regional water. Yeah, yeah, that's been my interpretation, so. Yeah. Director McMahon? And I don't get to pay for it, too, so.
I have said a number of times here that I am entirely in favor of diversifying our water supply. It's, it's urgently needed. Also very interested in, in all the sources that we can come up with. But we've already done this work. To go back and redo work that's already been done seems questionable to me. This is not, this is being held out as our only option to save us. I, I, I don't see that, I'm sorry. I am going to respect the enormous amount of work that our staff and consultants have put into planning for water. It's unfortunate that it is taking so long. And it is frustrating that the number of processes and permits and waiting lists we have to go on is so extensive. If, this board certainly could advocate with senior government to improve that situation. But I don't see how this is really going to help us out. So I will be voting against the motion, thank you.
Director Henderson?
Meters might help us in 2025, because they'll be installed in 2024, so there'll be no real savings in, effectively until 2025. We've been told Langdale is, I believe, 25, roughly 2025. I'm not hearing any other options. So to challenge this as a potential is, again, accepting that we're going to go with two, three, or more years of drought before we have more supply. So I, it, if, it's, it astonishes me that this isn't just something to get moving. It will not take much in the way of staff time. And it is an emergency solution. It is a short-term solution. There's a lot of other things that need to continue to happen. You read my other documents. We have a lot of work to do in the next two or three years to put this behind us forever. But I'm dealing with the very short term.
Director Lee?
Thank you, Chair, I did have two points to make. And the, the other one is resiliency or redundancy, whatever you wanted to term it. And I heard that was a reason to go forward, and I agree. We need that in all our water systems. Very important thing to have in all of our water systems. In fact, during the last emergency that we had here, staff did have a plan in place to provide enough water to the seashell area. And they had, were, were capable of doing it in a very short time. And it involved putting a pump in Roberts Creek at the High Point, which would then pump water from the wells north. And that was a viable option that was considered, along with adding a temporary well to, to put more water in to the system, which was ready to go, because they didn't know how long this was going to happen. So there was a plan in place to provide enough water. There was never a danger of actually running out of water. But there was sure a danger of not having what the residents were used to. But everybody needs resilience, everybody needs backups. It's the next phase of what we're up to, I believe. And it's in the line of things to do. There's a lot of things that can go wrong in providing water to any one place, like an earthquake that'll wipe out the dam. We, we do need to, as soon as possible, put, put measures in place to mitigate that. But it needs to be in the order of importance and affordability. So that's, that's why I'm concerned about blinking here.
Okay, thank you, Director Lee. I see Director Paul's hand up, and Director Paul hasn't spoken to this item yet, so I'll...
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just had the question, during that testing, or during the testing, during the test well, was that settling pond across the road there? Because that is drilled, that is dug down to sea level, which would impact the aquifer. And it's a tailings pond from Lehigh, which does include stuff, chemicals that they try their very hardest not to get down there, but to make it into the system, because it runs off of roads and everything else, too. So as far as I know, as being an employee from Lehigh, on Lehigh, that we have never been told that the water has been tested, and it's not usually tested for everything, because it's not used for drinking water, it's used for processing and washing materials. So we, we have been, it has been explained to us, I have some parents that are on wells, and they get tested all the time, but it is very expensive, and they don't test for everything. It's only what you ask them to test for. So if there's heavy metals and stuff like that, or anything that infiltrates, especially once you start pumping it out, that, it's a snapshot. It's like an X-ray at the time, that's all you see at that specific time. And if this is being pumped in, it theoretically could contaminate the whole water system. And that's where you have to pump out all the lines and everything else, correct? So I'm just wondering, was it fully dug to the depth that is now during that test, test phase?
I think it's, look to staff first, and then Director Henderson.
I'm not sure is, is the answer. I can't remember exactly when that tailings pond was put there, but that was a good description by the director of what goes into that pond, and that it is down to sea level. Thank you.
Okay, I see Director Henderson. Then I'm going to call a vote on this, this item, because we, we need some time before our hospital board meeting.
Took the words, words out of my mouth, Chair. Just, yes, the tailings pond was there, and the testing that was done in 2018 would have been testing for what was, what was in the ponds at that time. It is part of why we should retest. The other thing is, I want to, even though I appreciate that the chair, the representative from the town of Gibson's cannot vote, the other impact of us increasing our supply is we relied on the generosity of the town of Gibson's this past summer as one of our efforts to have redundancy and resiliency. I hope we can count on your future generosity. But that is, you know, it's ironic that we, if we can do something like this, it, it preserves your water. So it's kind of unusual that you don't get a vote. But I guess we're just in your hands in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, but we also, it would be budget coming from regional water, and we, we have our own budget for our water in Gibson's. Corporate officer?
Thank you. Before the vote, I would just like to request clarification for the public record with respect to the motion that was brought forward. The two bullets, they're vague. So they need to be very clear for staff direction.
Yeah, I was looking over to ask if it was being revised a bit on the fly, because it does, I, I do think it, that's, it does need to be revised a little, just for, to be a, a motion, proper motion. Can we look at it? That might be, yeah. Director Henderson, could you put it up as well as it being read? Yeah, okay. Okay, it has been, it has been adapt, adapted a bit.
Let staff report back to the, to a future committee regarding the provision of funding to reconfirm the Dusty Road site test well capacity and extensive testing of the quality and existence of any contaminants. Point one, cost to be less than $50,000. And point two, suggested funding from reserve surplus funds to be identified by Sunshine Coast Regional District staff.
That seems to work. Yeah. Director Lee, not sure?
Yes, without seeing the written motion, I'm a little uncertain that, I believe the, the intent was to not only have a look and make sure the existing water isn't contaminated, but also evaluate the risk of future contamination. Is that in the motion?
Could that be done by a hydrogeologist? I mean, it's kind of, well, I don't know if it could be done. I don't, so I'm not sure it is.
I mean, that, that chair is usually, we're at risk of contamination in any of them. You know, there, there could be a, a natural disaster and something falls in the Chapman Lake. And, you know, so that's why we test, I believe it's four times a week at the water treatment plant. So I think that the, the best practice, but presumably that the, the report would comment on, would, would address the risks of future contamination. Obviously, they can't confirm. And, and by the way, the report in 2018 did not, did not say there was contaminations. It said there was a risk of contamination in the future. And there was a risk from future industrial activities, not from, from the current industrial activities.
Okay, are we ready for a vote? All those in favor of the motion. All those opposed. That motion is defeated. And looking for a motion to adjourn? Okay, okay. When is lunch?
Well, I did have a question about lunch, but sorry about that. And, and this is, this is a little speculative, but we hope that Church Road is going to be online pretty soon now. We can't promise, of course, because it's outside of our control. But, and this is kind of a difficult question, but I'll try it anyway. How would last year have played out if we had had Church Road online? How would it have been different? What difference would it have made? If we have another year in 2023, like we had in 2022, what difference is Church Road going to make? And if you can't do that on the fly, I appreciate it. But I do think that we do need to explain to the public what effect the new well is going to have on our water supply. Thank you.
I feel like this question keeps coming up. Yeah, go ahead, answer it again.
Thank you, Chair. I, I think it's really dangerous being speculative, because it, so many things affect what we do in operations. But what I will say is that in stage four, we were using about 10 million liters a day. This will add on about 5 million liters a day, which is more around the, the consumption we see in stage three.
Okay. Director Henderson.
Yeah, I, I, I agree that it's, sorry, I agree that it's complex, but we should be putting out the different variables. The fundamental part of this is, I don't even want to go to stage three. So in, you know, to say, what would it look like last year? Maybe we would have been out of stage four, but even stage three is unacceptable, because we've got so much water. We just have to implement some plans to get it. So I would really encourage a little bit of work to identify the different criteria and say, if we have a 50-day drought, 100-day drought, if we want to be on stage two, this is how much water we need to have available. And that's something that I think can be done fairly expediently.
It's a discussion that's ongoing. No, nobody did, so that, yeah, so there was an intervention. So then now there's a second or two, the motion to adjourn. All those in favor, the motion carries.
Questions from the public?
Oh, right.
Well, we're, any questions from the public? Does it take a while for, has anyone?
No, should be.
Okay, none.